Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to our school board meeting for January 27, 2020. And I'd like to say congratulations in celebration of it's the 100th day of school.
Yeah. Okay.
Which, as my fourth grader points out, means there's only 77 more days to go to summer. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Daly for roll call.
Mr. Raymond Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Darrell Love.
Present.
Ms. Christie Morris.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy. Ms. Stephanie Spires.
Present. I would like to take a moment and welcome our honorary board members here this evening. Each month, we have a student representative, a classified representative, and a teacher representative that serve on our board and participate in our meetings. And we encourage you to actively ask questions and engage and participate in the process. So first up, we have Rick Smith, and he is our classified staff representative. Rick was born and raised in Detroit, Michigan, and moved here with his wife in 1998. He was hired in 2000 and was quickly acclimated to the service fields the maintenance department provides: carpentry, painting, and drywall repairs, glass doors and locks, welding, and general maintenance. From 2008 until July of 2016, he was responsible for servicing and repairing every school facility roof in the district. Rick accepted a call to ministry in 2006 and was commissioned in 2012. He currently serves as the senior pastor of the Historic Second Christian in Midway, Kentucky. He is a former vice president of a local nonprofit Fabo 1(c)(3) organization and currently serves on several boards in some capacity. In his 20 years of serving FCPS, he has come to the belief that parental involvement is paramount for every student to truly be successful. And we want to welcome Rick.
Yeah.
And Donna Gay Tyler from Southern Middle is our teacher representative. She is a 7th grade language arts teacher at Southern Middle. She's from Chicago, Illinois. She completed her undergraduate degree at Howard University in Political Science and attained a master's degree, along with administrative and middle school certifications from Concordia University in River Forest, Illinois. Before moving to Kentucky in 2014, she taught in Chicago Public Schools for over 15 years. She was a teacher representative on the local school council, a member of the principal selection and school improvement plan committees. She also was a teacher sponsor for several after-school groups, including the Student Advisory Committee and Our American Voice, a nonprofit organization geared towards engaging young people in civics education through hands-on experiences. In 2006, Donna was selected to participate in a summer by literacy institute in...
Oaxaca.
Say that for me?
Oaxaca.
Oaxaca, Mexico, and the National Association of Year-Round Schools Summit in San Diego, California. She also has been a wedding singer and praise and worship leader at her local church and is married with two kids. Welcome.
Good job.
And Jackson Ferris from STEAM Academy is one of our student representatives. And Jackson, I was thinking about you earlier today because we met with legislators, Mr. Love and myself, and Superintendent Cox. And we were talking about how we want more opportunities for our students to earn dual credits and earn college credits. And I thought of you because, I'm going to read his bio, Jackson is a senior at STEAM Academy, and he will be continuing his education at the University of Kentucky later this fall. He will graduate from STEAM with over 30 college credit hours. Which means he will enter UK as a sophomore, majoring in psychology. During his time at STEAM, he has successfully completed a variety of internships, including a semester at LAX TV in downtown Lexington and the WRFL radio station on UK's campus. He has also successfully completed two research internships in Philosophy and Communications Department at UK. His teachers and staff are proud of all he has accomplished during his high school career. So also, I want to just take a moment and do a couple quick housekeeping things this evening. I am actually going to have to exit a few minutes early because I have been asked to attend, KET is doing a forum this evening on foster care and our children. And as you all know, during legislative time, and especially tomorrow being the budget address, this is a really important time for us as your school board representatives to be out navigating for our children. As you've learned in recent board meetings, we predict or we think it's about 60% of our students currently live in poverty. And in Kentucky, we know that 18,000 children were in foster care last year, and we believe that 31,000 children were in place with relatives. So it's about 50,000 children living outside of their homes. And so we know this is a crisis. We're feeling it here as a school district, and so I'm honored to be able to participate in that this evening. But when I do make my exit, Mr. Daniels is going to step in as chair. Also, while I have everybody here, I had asked all the board members to bring their calendars because we have a couple meetings that we need to schedule before I exit. And so if it's okay, I want to do that now. The first meeting that we need to schedule is we have some expulsion hearings.
You want to call me?
What? We have some expulsion hearings that we need to schedule. And so I'm going to propose some dates, and if you are available, if you can just let me know. So Tuesday, February 11th.
I'm out.
Available.
All right, and I'm available for that one. All right, the 25th of February.
Available.
Available.
Also available.
So I have Darrell, Ray, and Christie for that one. Thursday, February 27th? Thursday, March 12th?
On the 27th, if needed, I can be available on the 27th, going back to February 27th.
Okay. I can be available the 27th. I can ask Mr. Murphy if he can be available.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question? Those were for daytime hearings. I don't know if you specified that.
Oh.
Those dates that were provided.
They were all daytime hearings.
And Shelley, what time are you thinking for that time?
Well, it had been suggested that we look at daytime expulsion hearings because we typically do them at night because board members can't make it during the day. But some of the board members expressed that they thought they could. So we got some dates, and that's what these are for Mr. Chinowas, for daytime expulsion hearings. We already have some on the books for nighttime, but we don't have any for daytime.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so does that change? We were thinking like morning, correct, Shelley?
Do we think parents can make it daytime? Is that realistic for us?
Mr. Daniels, typically, we do our other hearings, the ones that don't have to come to the board. We do those during the day.
Pretty good attendance.
Nine times out of 10, the parents can make it. Not always, you know, we will have the backup of the evening dates if a parent expresses that concern. I think honestly, some parents and some of our witnesses who work for the district would appreciate daytime hearings. It's just we haven't been able to do that in the past.
Okay.
Good option.
Let me go back on the 25th. That will not work for me, but I could do the 27th.
What time are we proposing? Did a time come out? What time?
No. Shelley didn't want to give us a time.
That will be up to you guys. I was thinking you do 9 to 12, or 1 to 4, or if you want to do 6 in one day, we can do it all day. But that would be up to you. We just asked Mr. Chinowas' office for some dates that he was available during the day, knowing that he's busy also with depositions and court time.
Can I suggest 1 to 4? And therefore, if you kind of need to slide some more additional ones in there, you can. And so if we take that date, and if a group can do the afternoon, and another group can come in and do the evening, we can make sure if there's a backlog of expulsions, we can handle quite a few in one day.
That would be great.
Great point.
Maybe on like 1 or 2. I feel like Ms. Morris and myself would both prefer 9 to noon. Am I wrong?
That would be good for me, yes.
Okay. So we'll kind of work it out.
We're happy to help you any way we can, once you figure it out.
We'll kind of tentatively put these down. All right, so you cannot do the 25th, but you could do the 27th.
I can do the 25th in the evening PM.
Okay.
And the other date was the 27th, and I can be a little bit flexible with that date.
Okay. All right, and then I'm going to give us one or two more dates, just to...
I can do the 27th during the day, so I'm pretty flexible. We do the 27th.
Okay. Now, that got us up to the 27th. All right, Thursday, March 12th. Nobody, I think several of us are out. Am I wrong? March 12th?
I'm out for March 12th.
You're in for March?
No.
You're out. Okay. March 17th?
I can make that work.
That is St. Patrick's Day, but I'm willing to forego that. I can do 17.
All right.
I think I can also make that date.
All right, so it sounds like we all... All right, I'm going to send this out to you all because this should get us...
Okay.
And he said 9 to 1, or 9 to 12?
I'm going to rework with them and send that out. But I think for most of these, all four of us can actually cover. And so we'll look at our schedules, and we may even break it up a little if some people want to do the morning. Maybe we'll just do a day and do some in the morning and some in the afternoon.
It'll work.
That way.
Madam Chair, also, while we have calendars out, what about our retreat?
Yes.
Do we need to try to get a date for that?
We need to get a date for our board retreat as well. When we did the superintendent's evaluation in the fall, said that right after the new year, we would do a retreat. And we also really need to do a retreat sooner rather than later as we begin our budget discussions so that we can strategically plan and make sure everything aligns. So I'm open to people throwing out dates.
There was a date that you had proposed, right?
I had proposed February 8th, which the four of us all stated could work.
Okay. But Mr. Murphy had a conflict that day.
But Mr. Murphy had a conflict, but he did not provide any alternative dates.
Was the 15th out?
Mr. Murphy said that he was out for every Saturday in February.
Okay.
And so we could look at doing a weekday.
Okay.
I don't know, do you have a date if people want to throw out? We are all out the weekend of February 21st because that is a KSBA.
Yes. And typically, how many hours are we going to?
When I had proposed it, I said 8 to noon on February 8th.
So can I suggest maybe a... The closest date for me is like outside the Saturdays is 24th.
Monday, the 24th?
Yeah.
At a board meeting.
Oh, that's right. That makes for a long day. It's very hard to get these in because normally, we do Saturdays.
Right.
And Saturday gives us some flexibility. Is Mr. Murphy able to be a little bit more flexible in that date?
He indicated that he could not. It is my understanding that he has volunteered to officiate some academic team challenges.
Okay.
Is Sunday ever an option?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm speaking for myself.
You speak for me, too.
And I think for the staff as well.
Well, looks we got two choices. We got a Saturday, schedule it anyway, or pick a Friday and do four or five hours. I mean, we've got to work with what we have, so is the 8th out or in? And if the 8th is out, is the 15th out or in? Somebody said out already.
I mean, what we could do is have the 8th as a date and propose an alternative date. And it seems to me that for the four of us, the 8th is the best date. If he cannot make the alternative date that we choose, then we move to the 8th. If he can make the alternative, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I agree. I'm in with you. And for those who participated in the past, it's important to have the full board there.
It is.
So trying to see how we can accommodate, again, his other activities on Saturday in February. If that happens, there's a lot that goes on, so we can look at a date that's amenable to all board members would be preferable.
I guess here's the thing. We don't want to continue to push this out, and when you think about the dates, it's either the 8th or maybe the 22nd.
Which is the 22nd.
But then that's the KSBA conference, right? So that's out, and then the 15th is out. So really, we are just stuck here. And we need to get this thing kind of done so we can move forward. Maybe Mr. Murphy can see if someone else is. He's judging a competition, that he can find an alternate type person to kind of maybe help.
That seemed very clear, I guess, in the response, very resolute in terms of, and you know, we want him to keep his commitment to children.
What do we have, four-hour block? It's a four-hour block?
Yeah.
Just have him give us some alternative four-hour blocks.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll figure it out there.
I'm going to just throw this out here. If we're going to do it during the week, kind of in the afternoon, I'd prefer Wednesdays, just if we're going to be here late.
Okay. Can I throw this out? Wednesday, the 5th?
I can't do that.
I cannot do the 5th.
Okay. 12th? Oh, no, that's spring break.
What?
No, I'm sorry. That'll work.
Can you do...
12th will work for me.
12th worked for me.
Me as well.
Okay, let's just do the 12th and see if that works with...
And are we wanting to say like 4 to 8 so that we do it after?
Yes.
His school day?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
Come on, February?
Yes.
February 12th.
I got to see if I'm here. Yeah, sorry, I got to check. I got a conference to go to that week. Reading recovery and on the board.
So we aren't here? Is this where we're at?
Yeah. She's checking.
She's checking.
Yeah, I think we got reading recovery kind of flows through.
Thank you all for your patience. As you can see, we tried to do this, and we needed to all be sitting here with our calendars.
Yeah, you got it.
All right, so right now, we are looking at the 12th or the 8th, and we will come back to that. All right, so moving on in this evening's agenda, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Morris for the moment of silence, the pledge allegiance, and the reading of the mission statement.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, I will read our mission statement. Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and each student's graduate, I'm sorry, y'all, I knew I was going to miss this up, at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
All right, thank you. At this time, if there is no changes, I'd like to move for approval of the agenda. Oh, wait, there's a note on my thing to amend the agenda. All right, I would like to pull from the, or I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as provided, with the exception that I am going to pull agenda items K3 and So if someone can make that motion?
Madam Chair, I remove that we approve the agenda as presented with the removal of K3 and K4.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Daniels. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. We like to begin each school board meeting with a performance to showcase our talented students and high-quality arts instruction. Tonight, we welcome Lexi Petrie. Lexi is a senior at Tate's Creek High School. She'll be performing "Somewhere Over the Rainbow" when we play Dorothy Gale in Tate's Creek High School's production of Wizard of the Oz, March 19th through the 21st, with performances at 7:00 PM each day. She's accompanied by Tate's Creek choir director Nick Johnson. Please join the board and welcoming her to the stage. [applause] Somewhere over the rainbow, way up high, there's a land that I've heard of once in a lullaby. Somewhere over the rainbow skies are blue, and the dreams that you dare to dream really do come true. Someday, I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind me, where troubles melt like lemon drops away above the chimney tops. That's where you'll find me. Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly. Birds fly over the rainbow. Why then, oh, why can't I? If happy little bluebirds fly beyond the rainbow, why, oh, why can't I? If there are any family members or friends of Lexi, I ask that you stand and be recognized for supporting your young artist. And just a reminder, the Wizard of Oz is March 19th through the 21st with performances at 7:00 PM each night, so get your tickets. All right, now, I'd like to introduce Jackson Ferris, our student representative, who will lead a special portion of tonight's recognition. And the board can remain seated except for...
Good? Kind of loud? It's okay. Well, January is a special time for Fayette County Public Schools because it's the month we pause to thank our school board members for their hard work and dedication to the students, families, and staff throughout our district. School board members work long hours attending meetings, reading information and reports, visiting schools and classrooms, listening to their constituents, and responding to people's concerns. Overall, our district's education program exists to support student achievement. This can be broadly defined to include work ethic, character education, and job skills, but academic achievement is the core purpose of schooling. The local school board represents community by making sure that tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently on behalf of all students. The Fayette County Board of Education sets the overall tone and leads the charge for our success. They stand by our mission, which is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve a high level, high levels, excuse me, and graduate prepared to excel in a global society. We are fortunate in our community to have compassionate board members who are concerned about meeting the needs of every student in every school. Tonight, we commend our board for their spirited leadership, and we salute their relentless pursuit of excellence in education. These board members also have high expectations of everybody else. They ask tough questions, and they are committed to transparency, honesty, and openness. Mrs. Stephanie Ashman Spires, Mr. Raymond Daniels, Mr. Darrell Love, Mr. Tyler Murphy, and Ms. Christie Morris represent more than just the neighborhoods from which they were elected. These individuals are committed to ensuring a world-class education for every child in our community. Because of that commitment, they play a vital role in building Lexington for future generations. In recognition of that responsibility, our mayor, Ms. Linda Gordon, will share a few thoughts and read a proclamatic, excuse me, a proclamation honoring the board members.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jackson. Thank you so much for inviting me here tonight, and I won't take too much of your time. I know this is the first meeting of the new year, and you have a lot of business to discuss. I'm here tonight to recognize community leaders who have a direct impact on the future of our community, our young people. January is National School Board Recognition Month, and in Fayette County, we have a hard-working Board of Education. Our five school board members are committed to making sure Fayette County Public Schools provides a diverse educational environment that meets the needs of our children. I know you all are advocates for our public schools and work many volunteer hours. Our Board of Education includes Chair Stephanie Spires, Vice Chair Ray Daniels, Christie Morris, Tyler Murphy, and Darrell Love. Your leadership, combined with the knowledge and skills of Superintendent Manny Cox, provide guidance, policy, planning, and guidelines for our school system. I want to thank each of you for your commitment and dedication to the students, faculty, and staff of Fayette County Public Schools. Now, I would like to go ahead and read the proclamation. And at the end, with any luck, we can do what we did last year, which was all of you came down and we had a picture made together.
Yes.
Just a suggestion. School Board Recognition Month. Whereas, the mission of the public schools is to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas, local school board members are committed to our children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, staff, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our children. And whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education. Now, therefore, I, Linda Gordon, Mayor of Lexington, commemorate the many accomplishments of Superintendent Manny Cox and the members of the Fayette County Board of Education, including Chair Stephanie Spires, Vice Chair Raymond Daniels, and members Christie Morris, Tyler Murphy, and Darrell Love. And I hereby proclaim January 2020 School Board Education Recognition Month. Congratulations.
[applause]
The school board's dedication is also respected by business leaders who know that strong schools are essential for strong economy. Representing the business community tonight is Ray Daniels, who is the 2020 Board Chairman of Commerce Lexington.
All right, we'll bring greetings to our wonderful school board from CEO Bob Quick, Commerce Lexington. And his words is that he wants you guys to understand that the business community stands with our board, supports our board, appreciates our board, appreciates our hard work in developing the future leaders of Lexington, and our true commitment to our mission statement, which is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society. So from our business community to us and to you guys, thank you.[619.91][619.91](applause)
Can you take a picture with you?
No, no, we don't have to.[627.41][627.41](laughter)
Yeah, you know. Thank you, Mr. Daniels.[632.16][632.16](laughter) The Equity Council, as the conscience of our community, monitors fairness while advocating for all students to achieve at high levels. The council also advises the school board on equity issues. Chairman Abdul Mohammed is here to share a few words about working alongside the school board.[653.70][653.70](applause)
I thought long and hard on this. I said, "I only got 30 minutes, so I need to cut it back to two."[667.23][667.23](laughter) But sincerely, I just want to say thank you. I've lived in Lexington now, going on 14 years in April, and I remember moving here and where I moved from, I thought the school district was a better school district than where I was in another part of the state. I can truly say, as the Chair of the Equity Council today, that this by far is the best board and superintendent in this state, period.[704.12][704.12](applause) Period.[706.12][706.12](applause) They are, they are challenging the process, they are, they are shooting for the stars, my friends. They are shooting for the stars. And I don't say that lightly because I had two students graduate out of Fayette County Public Schools that are doing extremely well today. And because of that foundation, I feel in my heart and I know in my mind that this board and this superintendent of ours is doing the right thing every day. So thank you, and thank you for your leadership. It is greatly appreciated.[737.73][737.73](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Now, we will hear from Jessica Hyler, President of Fayette County Education Association, and Tonya Coles, the Vice President of the Fayette County Educational Support Professionals and Association.[760.19][760.19](applause)
When I was thinking about what I might say tonight, as we celebrate School Board Appreciation Month, I was reminded of one of my favorite quotes by Mahatma Gandhi, "Be the change that you wish to see in the world." The five elected members of our school board, including our superintendent, must have had the same thought when deciding to serve the citizens of Fayette County on the school board. They saw a need to serve and they stepped up. It's not a glamorous public service job, but then most aren't. We don't always agree on everything, but I appreciate their willingness to serve our families and lead our great public schools. Thank you for a servant, for your service, and as a small token of our thanks, we have made a donation to UK's Dance Blue that benefits the Pediatric Oncology Unit at the UK Children's Hospital. The organization is close to our heart as it supports children and families from around Kentucky, including our own Fayette County families. Thank you.[820.62][820.62](applause)
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As you know, we had, in today's society, we can actually go to say, "Hey Siri, okay, Google," and it brings up "thank you." But sincerely from your heart, I went to the old-school Webster's Dictionary, I'm showing my iPhone, (laughter) to look up the definition of "thank you." The definition of "thank you" is a polite expression of our gratitude. We at FCESPA just want to take a moment to express our appreciation for what a wonderful job that you all are doing for our students, families, and our employees. In your roles as board members, you all have demonstrated your abilities to add a value to everything you do. Thanks to your hard work, it shows that you have dedication, determination, and resourcefulness, allowing for us to do a better job for our students and their families. Again, we thank you on a job well done. We really appreciate all that you do. From the board and the members of the FCESPA, I am Tonya Coles, your Vice President of FCESPA, who thank you, and I'll leave this message.[898.81][898.81](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Hyler and Ms. Coles. Before tonight's meeting, members of our 16th District PTA hosted a dinner for the school board members, and the board thanks them for that special treat. The PTA is a wonderful, active partner with our Board of Education. To say a few words on behalf of our families, here is the 16th District PTA President Penny Christian.[930.10][930.10](applause)
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, guys.
The mission of PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. I think we understood very early on that we could not advocate for all children successfully if we did not partner with our school board. Most of these school board members know me as quiet, unassuming, and shy.
Let's sit down.
I didn't say anything. Keep going.[970.43][970.43](laughter)
No, seriously. They know that I'm an outspoken advocate for all children, and I really, I mean, I'll go to battle for anybody, for a kid. And I appreciate being able to actually be able to disagree with them, but when we can all come back together and understand that every 44,000-plus kids in this district are all ours, we all care about them, we all want them to succeed. So I want to thank you on behalf of the PTA for being as open as you are with us, because transparency hasn't always been our forte in the district. But I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll see you next year with more food. And, did you like your planner? You got a planner. Thank you, guys.[1015.57][1015.57](applause)
Thank you, Mrs. Christian, for all the support that the PTA provides for our district. Lastly, I would like to invite Superintendent Manny Kalk to share some thoughts.
Thank you. I'll just add, really, can we give all of our guest speakers a hand for recognizing the board and the work that they do?[1044.13][1044.13](applause) I just want to add my own thanks to each of our school board members this evening in honor of National School Board Appreciation Month. The five individuals who serve around this table have stepped up to give other time and talent in service of the children and families in our community and throughout our entire school district. It is not only an honor, but I'm deeply humbled by the opportunity to work alongside you. And we are fortunate as a community to have individuals who really understand their purpose and why that they serve, and that's to put children first, and do that with a deep sense of commitment to equity, equality, and social justice. So thank you.[1095.58][1095.58](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Kalk. I appreciate FCPASK asking me to be a part of this important event. On behalf of my peers, thank you, board members, again, for your continuous support, which affords us the opportunity to succeed in our educational journeys.[1116.33][1116.33](applause)
And at this time, I invite my fellow board members to meet out front for recognitions, and Mr. Daniels, you can take over reading.
Safe travels and good luck.
Yes.
Don't forget, last year, we had children who were suspended by the COVID. Any examples of how the 2nd Ward School District didn't quit?
All right. Now we'll continue with our monthly student and staff recognitions. All right, first one, we have a handful of musicians who attend Fayette County Public Schools, excelling this fall's inaugural David Moore Piano Competition in Richmond. This event, which was coordinated by EKU and Kentucky Music Teachers Association, drew about 40 students from across the state. Fayette County Public Schools winners include the following. In Division I, Emma Mizuno from Rosa Parks Elementary earned first-place honors. Come down, Emma. In Division II, Vivian Luciere from Henry Clay High School was runner-up. In Division III, Jenny Lee from Paul Lawrence Dunbar placed first, and Emily Peng from Bryan Station High School was second. Please join the board and recognize these young musicians.[1201.23][1201.23](applause)
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Great job.[1206.23][1206.23](applause)
And if we have any family or friends or anyone here to support for this last recognition, please stand and be recognized. Any parents, family, or friends?[1262.13][1262.13](applause) Thank you for your support. Thank you. All right. Girls Middle School Basketball. The girls' A basketball team at Beaumont Middle School capped an undefeated season with a close, with a close win in the tournament, edging Morton 39 to 37 in the championship game. Beaumont is coached by Tony Wilson, Brittany Shaver, and Chelsea Mishner. Please join the board in congratulating the Colts on an outstanding basketball season.[1291.13][1291.13](applause)
We just want to say, we do have players. Some of them play multiple sports and play up in high school basketball, so it's just us.
That's a good thing. Thank you. Congratulations.[1318.21][1318.21](applause)
39 to 26 to cap their perfect season. The Panthers are coached by Mike Graves, Kelsey Mies, and Lauren Moss. Please join the board in congratulating these student athletes from Hayes.[1371.71][1371.71](applause)
There we go. Everybody see me? All right. Here we go. One, two, three. Again. Last time. Thank you. Congratulations.[1381.71][1381.71](applause)
Once again, any parents or family here with Edith J. Hayes team, please stand up and be recognized, please?[1402.13][1402.13](applause) We thank you for your support. Kentucky Theater Association State Festival. Tates Creek High School brought home second-place honors from the Kentucky Theater Association High School Festival and Play Competition. The students performed "James and the Giant Peach," based on the classic children's book, and the judges selected Reese Allen for the All-Star Cast. The Tates Creek, Tates Creek group will represent Kentucky at the Southeastern Theater Conference next month in Louisville. Please join the board in saluting these students and their teacher, Daniel Ellis, and producer Tiara Davidson.[1430.21][1430.21](applause)
Come on down. Come on down. Come on down. Principal Mills, come on down.
Congratulations.
Boy, congratulations.
I'd rather do this than do what you do. I'd rather do this. You guys see me?
Great job. Great job.
Great job.
There you go. We kind of have three rows of it.
Rest until we get ready to do it. You don't have to sit like that.
All right. All right. Thank you. So we can see everybody. I can have, I need one more person to come forward and kind of bend down. Do you can, do you can kind of come down like that? Down the back section, kind of scooch in a little bit, please? All right. Okay, everybody see me? See me that I can see you. All right, here we go. Again. Calm down. All right. Here we go. One, two, three. Again. Last time. Thank you.[1466.21][1466.21](applause)
And once again, any friends or family here from Tates Creek High School, please stand and be recognized. Any friends or family?[1474.03][1474.03](applause) Thank you for your support.
Good evening. It is my honor to do the 212 Degrees Award. At 211 degrees, water is hot, but at 212 degrees, it boils. The difference is just one degree, but it is significant. Boiling water creates steam, and that steam has enough energy to power a freight train. Reaching our mission of creating a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society requires an extra degree of effort from all of our employees. Each and every day, we have countless staff members who go above and beyond in the service of students. We honor some of those efforts with a 212-degree recognition during our monthly school board meetings. Tonight's 212-degree recognition is for an employee who steps up to fill the needs of some of our most vulnerable families and students before anyone else has even determined that a need existed. Those who work alongside Family Resource Center Coordinator Casey Spicer describe her as "one of the most wonderful people in the world," "outstanding in her job," "humble," "and able to build relationships with kids and families in the most beautiful way." Beyond those platitudes, Dixie Elementary School Principal Robin
All right. Thank you. So we can see everybody. I need one more person to come forward and kind of bend down. You can kind of come down like that. Down the back section, kind of scooch in a little bit, please. All right. Okay, everybody see me? See me that I can see you. All right, here we go. Calm down. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Again, last time. Thank you.
And once again, any friends or family here from Tates Creek High School, please stand and be recognized. Any friends or family? Thank you for your support.
Good evening. It is my honor to do the 212 Degrees Award. At 211 degrees, water is hot, but at 212 degrees, it boils. The difference is just one degree, but it is significant. Boiling water creates steam, and that steam has enough energy to power a freight train. Reaching our mission of creating a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society requires an extra degree of effort from all of our employees. Each and every day, we have countless staff members who go above and beyond in the service of students. We honor some of those efforts with a 212-degree recognition during our monthly school board meetings. Tonight's 212-degree recognition is for an employee who steps up to fill the needs of some of our most vulnerable families and students before anyone else has even determined that a need existed. Those who work alongside Family Resource Center Coordinator Casey Spicer describe her as "one of the most wonderful people in the world," "outstanding in her job," "humble," and "able to build relationships with kids and families in the most beautiful way." Beyond those platitudes, Dixie Elementary School Principal Robin Steiner had several specific examples to share. Dixie is home to a growing number of refugee families from Congolese nations, and Casey has taken it upon herself to become a familiar face in the neighborhood and really become a part of the community, going on home visits, making welcome packets for incoming kindergarten students, and attending family gatherings and celebrations. When she noticed that the weekend food backpacks from God's pantry didn't include food reflective of the culture of the families who were receiving them, she took it upon herself to collect donations and purchase staples of beans, rice, and fresh fruit and vegetables to be more responsive and inclusive. For more than a year, she has been working with various community agencies to try to gather enough bikes for the students who have wanted desperately to be able to bike to school. When other holiday-giving programs were unable to meet the requests last month, Casey took it upon herself to make social media pleas to family members and friends in order to gather enough money to purchase them for the children herself. Since an image is worth a thousand words, here's a short video of the surprise. Please join me in extending a heartfelt thank you to Dixie Family Resource Coordinator Casey Spicer for building relationships with families in ways that bridge cultures and make our schools a welcoming place for everyone.
All right, Superintendent Colk, I believe we turn this over to you right now.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. I just want to, before we begin tonight's superintendent's report, to personally welcome our student, teacher, and classified representatives this evening. Donna, Jackson, and Rick, you represent important voices here. Let me stop.
Oh!
Okay.
We got a proclamation in here. That's actually my fault, then.
And we will pause and go through our proclamations.
Okay, it's me.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, fine. Our proclamation tonight celebrates February the 3rd through the 7th, 2020, as National School Counseling Week. It is my honor to ask Tates Creek's High School Counselor Megan Majors, who serves as counselor to both of my boys, to come forward and read this proclamation.
Yes, yes.
Whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school and life, and whereas school counselors support student success by working with teachers and other educators to help students develop and build self-understanding and self-awareness and learn better relate to others. Whereas the work of counselors is as individuals as the students they serve and includes academic student conferences as well as one-on-one group counseling to help students deal with academic, social, emotional, and behavior issues. And whereas serving as a bridge between home, school, and community, school counselors work with families to focus on ways to further educational, personal, and social-emotional growth of their children, helping families access community resources, making referrals, and consulting with outside agencies. And whereas, school counselors play a critical role in preparing students for the future, helping them explore their unlimited potential, set goals for themselves, select courses in middle and high school, choose college and career paths, and navigate the college recruitment, application, and financial aid process.
Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating February the 3rd through the 7th, 2020, as National Schools Counseling Week. Be it further proclaimed that the members of the school board express their deep appreciation to all of our school counselors for the amazing job they do to support our students and schools as integral members of the Fayette County Public Schools team. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education.
The motion is in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating January 13th through 17th, 2019, as National Maintenance Worker.
So short.
Wrong sheet here. All right, school counseling. Put that to the side.
I salute.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, pass, three-oh. Thank you.
So the actions taken here this evening can be the very best they possibly can be. And I just want to, again, just acknowledge, Jackson, what a great job you did.
Excellent.
Yes, give him a hand. Not easy talking to front of folks. And greatly appreciative. All right, under superintendent's report, we're going to take it out of order. As I shared with the board, Bryan Station Middle School, the board would have to consider approving their school improvement plan. Again, it defies logic because they have a school-based decision-making council. But sometimes the statutes that are enacted defy logic, and we have to comply anyway. So at this time, we're going to ask Principal Kirby, her team, also Chief of Middle Schools, Mr. Watts, to come forward, and anyone else to share with you the school improvement plan for Bryan Station Middle School at this time.
Good evening. I'm Robin Kirby, and I have been serving as the principal at Bryan Station Middle School for the past three years. And we have a fairly new leadership team that is comprised of an associate principal, admin dean, dean of students, and we have a large, extensive support staff with our counselors, two counselors, as well as we have a support team with our social workers as well as a mental health specialist. Just to give you a little demographics of our school. The demographics of our schools, presently, we have seven hundred and ninety-one students. We are a two-program school. Our idea is that we are two programs but one school. So we have a traditional program that embodies four hundred and fifty-five students, and we have a Spanish immersion program that has three hundred and thirty-six students presently. The ethnicity breakdown is that we have twenty-four percent African-American, one percent Asian, twenty-eight percent Hispanic, six percent other, which comprises two or more ethnicities, and forty percent white. Our English learners, we have fifty-three students. We have a hundred and thirty-five students that are identified as gifted and talented, and we service eighty students that are special ed and sixty-three students that have 504 plans.
When we're middle. That concludes my report.
Any questions, board?
Myron, you might have said it already. When do we expect all of them to be complete?
December. December of 2020. December twenty.
All right, so next is our ten-point comprehensive safety investment plan, so we can inform our community and how we're strategically using this investment.
Snapshot of the bullet points of the plan. For my items, the middle and high school OD badges have been implemented. Our new visitor management system, Raptor, has started as well. It's already being utilized at Frederick Douglass and Carter G. Woodson, and other high schools will soon follow. The Crisis Grow Platform has been implemented at forty schools with ongoing training district-wide. Every principal has been trained, and we actually spoke to the LRC about this last week. They're very interested in this particular product and maybe doing something statewide regarding that. So Mr. Babbage and his team are instrumental sort of helping us coordinate all of that. So our D-Tex door alarms are in place, and school protocols have been established. Door access points have been implemented at all school facilities. Security cameras have been installed at all schools now. And DVR camera quarters and updates are completed as well. We covered the Secure Vestables, but just a snapshot there, again, of the work that is taking place, and for the public that wants to see that, that will all be a part of the presentation. The metal detectors and security ambassadors have been implemented at Douglas, Dunbar, Tates Creek, Bryan Station, Lafayette, and Steam Academy, and Henry Clay will start in fall of 2020 to coincide with the Secure Vestable project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We send it, sixty-two officers with the sixty-third offer went out today. We anticipate him accepting tomorrow, so we would go to sixty-three. We stepped, once the sixty-third position is filled, we have two remaining for the present time, and we've got a pretty good start on those with some previous employed police officers and actually some new that we may send to the academy. So we're still working through those. This is Officer Daniel Hart. As you can see, he's got two uniforms on. He's actually an Iraqi veteran himself, and he does some work with the post-critical incident seminar, which is something that offered up to our officers today that have been in either critical incidents, job-related, military-related, which he has been in both. And it's a seminar that I really think is some good self-care for our first responders. And so he was asked to be on the poster, and so he is appearing at Department of Criminal Justice to advertise the event, and then other places where law enforcement, other police stations and police sectors that will have this to make people aware of that, so. And this next part is actually, when Myron, Shelley, and I actually got to go to the Council of School Attorneys in New Mexico to present back in October, we used Robert Lewis's, or had looked at Robert Lewis's video series on each area. And so Shelley had the good idea that, let's just make a synopsis of all the things, kind of like a short video, but kind of sums it all up as far as our activities and how we interact, and really kind of gets to the culture and climate of our police department and our schools. And so he did a really good job in just a short amount of time. We played the video at the presentation in New Mexico and got a really good response. Got a lot of positive feedback after that, and we've actually had requests just to see the video, send it out. So we're going to be able to play that tonight, and I'll show you what we were able to show there.
We feel like it's a foundation to build with interaction with police, so that when they're adults and they get out outside of the school, they'll be able to interact with police also. So we're trying to be role models for these kids and just be a positive influence on their lives.
He is a wonderful police officer. He's really nice, really good. Thanks, everyone.
The best agent she ever worked for, in all honesty. What we do on a daily basis as far as, you know, getting to know them personally, and what they go through at the house, what they do on a daily basis here.
Just talking to them, just interacting with them. It's what we do. You know, kind of break the mold of an officer presence, oh, here comes a cop, you know, just get out of the way, or just get out of here, kind of thing.
The more you can talk to the kids and work well with your principals and administrators and other teachers, the easier your job is.
You're building relationships with kids, you know, some who don't have fathers, some who's looking for older brothers, you know, some who just may be needing a hug or a pat on the shoulder.
You get close to these kids, and they surprise you sometimes. She was a sixth grader when she gave me this card, and a subway card, because it was subway across the street from Jesse Clark. And I called her dad, and I said, I just wanted to tell you, you know, what an awesome daughter you've raised. Just a very special, very sweet girl.
I think the students feel safer when they see us. So just not only seeing us, but knowing us, knowing our names, knowing that they come and talk to us, helps them feel safe. It actually helps them open up a little bit, talk to us more.
Take care of my school kids.
I see them every morning, and I love saying good morning to them, love talking to them because, you know, I can come to school and know I'm in a safe environment.
Yes, yes.
Pending your questions, that's my presentation.
Man, can I make a recommendation that we send this to the legislators that we met with earlier today?
Yes.
Because one of the things that we had talked about, I'll prolong the night, but we talked about with them was the way in which we have a law enforcement group and how it interacts. And the chief and I were talking before the board meeting, how important that is, because our officers are not necessarily just like off the street, but they are part of our schools and how they build relationships with our students. And so as people are thinking about resource officers, and you see all this stuff in the nation, and these mishaps that are happening, you have to wonder, do they really have a keen understanding of what's happening in the building, or they were just assigned for the day, and they don't even have a relationship with the kids? So I think the model that we have is such a great model to really talk about this. So I think the legislators, what we were talking about today, would have an opportunity to see that in action.
Agreed. I'm just going to ask Ms. Stefan Dahl to get the video and send it out to Fayette County delegation. Yes.
I'll give you an update on the mental health and professional behavioral support professionals. We are still working with the minority recruiter and the Equity Office on recruiting as diverse candidates as we can, and we're especially looking for Spanish-speaking therapists. So if you know any, send them our way. We had our orientation for the new seven employees on January the 6th and 7th, and as of January 8th, we have fifty district mental specialists, thirty-nine at elementary schools, four serving middle schools, and six serving high schools, and one itinerant position that responds to any school that needs something in a quick manner. Just wanted to give you some statistics on the breakdown of hiring. We have, out of the fifty, forty-eight percent are African-American, Caucasians forty-two percent, Asians two percent, Middle Easterns two percent, and Latinos six percent.
Okay, so the question becomes, how come our district mental health reflects the demographic of our district? And we have some challenges doing that in terms of our, at the school level. Well, these positions were hired at the district level. And so we were able to make sure that we hire with that intentionality, and we hired for talent. So some amazing, talented educators of color as well. So we're very pleased. We still need more bilingual, Spanish-speaking district mental health professionals.
We'll take a French-speaking, too, just to...
Bonjour.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Congolese.
This is just a bar graph of what I just went over. In case you want to see that. Just breaking down gender, we have seventy-nine percent female and twenty-one percent male. So that's, believe it or not, with this area, twenty percent male's really good.
That's high.
Really good. So, and then just some other, there's a bar graph of that statistic. And then just other statistics, we have fifty district mental specialists, five point five African-American males, and four Spanish speakers. And that's the latest recruits.
Let me get that picture. I know I have it because I was in the picture. I know I have it because I was in the picture, but that's a great looking team, our mental health professionals there.
Yeah. So on the SEL curriculum adoption, the principals have reviewed and looked at the material. We now have an elementary, middle and high SEL adoption. Our SEL coordinator at the district level is working with the principals and their SPDMs for approval. And as that comes around, we've already scheduled our trainings and ordered materials for elementary. We'll be ordering middle and high in the next couple of weeks. But the elementary training for the SEL is March the 16th and 17th. The middle school training is April the 16th and the high school training is March the 24th and 25th.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to update you on our comprehensive adolescent assessment and health promotion to follow up on our presentation from last month, Manny always said if there's not a picture, it didn't happen. So here is LTMS open for business. There's a shot of the clinic right there.
Oh, my gosh.
And so here, social media monitoring. In the last 30 days, the, our system has scanned 24,057 posts. It's an average of 802 a day. They have looked at 2,480 images, an average of 83 a day, and they have sent us 10 alerts, none of which required follow-up. But we did review all of them as a team and determined what they were really talking about. One of them was talking about Fortnite. Another was talking about some political issues at the state level. There was one that was concerning, but it was a different, it was a different school in another state by another name. So we made a phone call to make sure that they were aware of it. So nothing that required any local follow-up.
Thank you, partner. Quick update on the education and training. As you all have heard over the past couple of months, we're working through collective impact across the city with several partners and much of that work will involve this work around how we create safer routes to school and from school to home, as well as services that we can help the community identify that you saw in that William Wells Brown infographic, the family needs. And so the education and training really will focus on some of the work the collective impact group is doing as they roll out their timeline. But be aware that we do have a fam U in partnership with the Urban League coming up, the LIFT conference in March. We plan and will elevate this project. We gave out more than 3,000 safety guides, but what we want to do is build family guides now for middle school. You heard the data earlier, talk about that being a tough group to move when it comes to restorative practices and behaviors, et cetera. So we want to publish some work to help support families on helping their, understand what their kids should know or be able to do both at home and in school. And so the LIFT conference is going to be March 21st at the BCTC campus. As you all know, we did our first conference there circa 2016 where we developed a portrait of a graduate, Dr. Koppo, who's the new president there, has invited us back and certainly appreciate the partnership there. November, as you can see, the LINK conference, I think I sent it out to the group today. I'll send it out to the board. We have a LINK partnership, Lincoln Youth, and that focused this training will be on restorative practice, actually. So we're going to have a focus with those groups. The first one we did on the 19th focused on mental health. McKenzie and Rainey did some work there as well as several other partners from the community.
So was that, was that another fam U, the one that you were talking about?
Yes, we have one coming up March 21st.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll send that out to the board members, the flyers as well as the LINK. It's a great partnership. All right. Thank you, team. And before I turn it back over to you, to our Chair Daniels, I just want to add tomorrow through our partnership with the Chamber and the Business Education Network, we will hold our career expo. We're excited about that. I'd just say the Lexington Convention Center. I know Heritage Hall, there's a whole bunch of little, little big places in there. But we'll be in one of them, be easy to find. And also a reminder to our families and to the public, this Saturday is the Kentucky American Water Science Fair once again. So come on out and yes, you can clap for both of those, right? Clap for both of those for our students. And with that said, I turn the meeting back over to you, Chair Daniels.
Thank you, Superintendent Call. And I think talked to Betsy at Business Education Network, expecting 1,200 ninth graders tomorrow.
Yes.
So phenomenal.
What time does that start tomorrow?
I think it's from nine, looking at, is it nine or 9:30?
I think it is nine, yeah.
Who, where's James? What time?
It's off about nine o'clock with Bryan Station and then around 2:30, sir.
Thank you, sir. There we go.
Daryl, you're welcome to come for lunch. Lunch by 11:30. All right. Thanks everybody for all the presentations this evening. So at this time, we have remarks from citizens. Members of the public may address the board during this period set aside by the board without submitting an item for the agenda. No action shall be taken during this portion of the meeting on issues raised by employees or public unless deemed an emergency by the board. So please note, the speakers will be, well, I don't know, do we have any speakers first of all, before you lay down the groundwork? So I don't need to go through that.
We don't have the cards, so we don't have any.
Okay. All right. So we do not have any speakers that are speaking on non-agenda items. So let's turn to, at the end of the meeting, members of the public who have signed up prior to the meeting are invited to address the board on any topic of district related concern that is not on the official agenda for this meeting. Do we have anybody signed up for anything?
We do not.
We do not.
Okay.
We'll move past that as well. And let's move to approval of routine matters. We need to approve the minutes. Hopefully, board members have had a chance to review the minutes from December the 5th, 2019, as well as the minutes of December 16th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes. Routine matters pass. Need a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. And so that brings us to action items. And I guess we've already had a chance to hear from Principal Kirby about her plan at middle, at Bryan Station Middle on ATS I improvement plan. And with no further questions, can we get a motion to approve the ATS I school improvement plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the improvement plan, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes three O, Tanya. And I believe this is an item that was reviewed at our planning meeting, but we have a motion in order to approve a contract with Cheneau with Law Office.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes three O, Tanya. And we pulled two contracts out, right?
Yes, you did.
Pulled those out.
Should be on page 91.
91, okay. So we need a motion to approve the acceptance of the offer of assistance extended by the School Facilities Construction Commission for $229,920. Annual debt service on our bonds to be sold for proposed construction or major renovation of facilities outlining the approved district facilities plan, subject to the approval of KD, Driski Facilities Branch per provision 702KR4 dot 160.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
That carries three O. Now we have a motion to approve the 220 to 2022 Frisky continuation program plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes three O, Tanya. That takes us to.
Monthly financials.
Monthly financials. Is Mr. Jackson here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The monthly financial report for the month of December 2019 reflects as follows. Our fund balance is $160.7 million, revenues approximately $336 million and expenses approximately $175 million. General fund overview comparing 2020 to 2019 fiscal year shows that our fund balance was 167, 760.7 this fiscal year versus 165 million last year. I will go into details a little bit later about that, but it's approximately $4.3 million less than same time last year. All funds combined, a total revenue of approximately $474 million versus expenditures of $249 million, net fund balance of 225 million as indicated by the black arrow. This slide shows all funds, Fund 1 through Fund 7,000. Only fund that's in a negative is related to capital outlay. And as I told y'all before, we receive money in the fall and then we get the second part of that money in the spring. The revenue analysis reflects 336 million for this fiscal year versus 2, 308.5 million for last fiscal year, thus we're up 27.5 million in comparison. A deeper analysis subtracting out the beginning balance reflects 265 million for this fiscal year versus 256 million for last year, with $9 million when you take out the beginning balance. Total expenditures for the 2020 fiscal years, 175 million versus 143.5 million. Expenses are up 31.5 million compared to the same time last year. This is primarily due to vendor payments up $7 million and salaries and friends up 8.5 million. The biggest jump is related to the timing of fund transfer expenditures in excess of $16 million for construction and renovation projects that we started off early this year. Balance sheet summary reflects balance sheet of 165 point, 168.5 in assets, 8 million in liabilities. Our position relates good relation to assets versus liabilities. Marcy Thomas, Dorothy Smith and John Price Fund reflected as shown. Are there any questions or concerns?
Any questions, concerns, board members?
Question there. All right. No questions, a motion in order to accept the monthly treasures report of revenue expense reports as presented to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports.
A second.
Board Member Morris made the motion. Board Member Dove, Love, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes three O. Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Our next item for your consideration, board, this evening is a resolution regarding the state budget, revenue projections and the creation of new tax expenditures. As you may recall, the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents drafted this base resolution for school boards to consider in order to send a unified message to Frankfurt about the need to fully fund public education. I shared the draft with you at last, this month, at our planning meeting and prior to. It's been updated to reflect the 2020 legislative priorities for Fayette County. And for discussion with the board, do you have the, do you have the resolution?
Yes.
In your package? Okay, I know Lisa sent it to you.
You guys were at legislative luncheon today, sir.
Yes.
I'll take it that we have, we have solidified our position.
Yes, sir. And the state of the budget.
Solidified it, echoed it.
Echoed it.
I think we could, right.
And the state of the budget addresses tomorrow evening.
And the state of the budget. So we'll know something fairly quickly.
Yes, sir.
Kind of, kind of, kind of, okay. Well, a motion is in order to adopt the resolution, unless you have any further questions. I'm sorry to cut that off. Any questions? Any further questions at all? Okay. Motion is in order to adopt the resolution regarding the state budget, revenue projections and the creation of new tax expenditures.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes three O.
Thank you, board. And that includes our action items, I believe, for this evening, but we have informational items. And our first informational item, going to ask our general counsel, Shelley Chatfield and Health and Wellness Coordinator, Debbie Bowen, to come forward to tell you more about the wellness policy that is before you for a first reading tonight. So there's no action, just the first reading, obviously discussion, feedback, et cetera.
Right. I'm just here to remind you, policies are read twice before you vote on them. So this is your first reading and Ms. Bowen's going to take it from here.
When we had our last school, school lunch audit, we were asked if we had reviewed our wellness policy anytime soon. We had not. They requested that we do that. We pulled together a very large committee of students, community members, teachers and administrators. Not everyone met at every meeting, but we did get input from everyone. We met four times and the product that we have is attached. The first change that they requested was that they felt that middle and high schools should also have wellness committees, so we have added language in there, not requiring them to have wellness committees, but requesting that they have them. The next change, we changed his or her to the more neutral their pronoun. Below that, we changed farm visits to farm to school events and agricultural education. We just felt that was a more accurate description of what was actually going on. School foods, where we link it to farm to school, we defined that as foods sold in And then the next one is change food marketing to marketing practices that relate to a healthy lifestyle rather than just limit it to food. We changed physical activity and physical education. We took out physical education because physical education was never mentioned in that part of the policy. A teacher caught that. We love our teachers. The next change, we had this language elsewhere in policy and we decided to insert it in this policy as well so that it is apparent to all that this is an important thing to our district. We also said that we were going to accommodate both student food allergies and religious, ethnic and cultural diversity. We had not had student food allergies in there as part of our accommodations in the cafeteria. Then we also changed plan to policy or plan because some schools have policies, some just have a health plan. So we wanted to differentiate, some of our school programs can do a health or wellness The last thing that we changed and we want to highlight this, our child nutrition director explained to all that were there what the rules were for the USDA food or school lunch, national school lunch program. Some of our students added their schools in that they were selling items that weren't in this particular timeframe. So we're going to be paying more attention to that and our students are going to help us make sure that we're following our own rules and, and they have agreed to be our partners in that. So that is, those are the sum total of the policy changes that we're making.
Questions, anyone? Thank you.
You will vote on these next month.
Thanks again. And our next informational item, going to ask our budget director, Jelaine Mullins, and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. John White, to come forward to present the 2020, 2021 draft budget. Just a draft, right? Let's emphasize that. It's just, you gotta have the conversation. And our approach, just so the board and the viewing public understands, is we took an as-is approach, assuming that there's going to be no change or increase in funding coming out of Frankfurt. So we took an as-is. That's the plan where you plan for the worst and you hope for the best, but hope's not a strategy, but a plan is. So we're planning for an as-is state when it comes to funding.
Yes, that, before we get started, it is just a preliminary, very early discussions. As was mentioned earlier, the, the governor will be given his, his proposed budget tomorrow night, so we'll all be watching and listening for that. But tonight, this is preliminary of things, a lot of things that we still don't know yet, but this is to set up the process or the outline of the timing tonight as a discussion. but this is to set up the process or the outline of the timing tonight as a discussion that's required. There's no approval or anything on your part, but it's just informational only on the draft working budget for FY '21.
As John alluded, tonight, we just want to start the budget discussion with the board to let them know the work that's currently being done and where we are at this point in time. We just wanted to start off by sharing a timeline. We are, the budget process has a lot of regulations that were under timelines, so we wanted just to share a little bit of that with you. We're required by law to begin the discussion with the board by January 31st every year. The budget discussion, it's been, we have been working on next year's budget since probably October. We've been working with the DPP office. Last week, we were able to provide just a preliminary enrollment projection to our principals to give them an opportunity to provide feedback before they receive their actual staffing allocation before March 1st. So that's in place. We're already working with our instructional folks as well as we're beginning to reach out to our department managers of our larger departments and going ahead and starting the discussion earlier than normal. We are required by law to provide our schools a staffing allocation, which is their Section Four and Section Five, which is their classified and certified staff, as well as their Section Six, which is their operating budget by March 1st of each year. So we are full, in full throttle, working on those to make sure that we can meet those deadlines. And as you already know, that we bring the tentative budget to you in May of each year. And we're also required to submit our AFR by July 25th of each year. And we receive our local tax rates in August, and we finalize our working budget by September 30th of each year with you guys. And when second month data is available in October, we go back in and we adjust our schools' second month, based on their second month or Section Six allocations, which is their operational supplies. We just wanted to share with you a couple of, I believe it was last year, maybe two years ago, the legislative session came out with a cap on CERS employer contributions and increase. They can increase no more than 12% over the next five years, and we have already received our increase for next year. So we just wanted to share with you what that kind of data looks like historically. And we currently have a KTRS employer contribution of 3%, and that covers employee health insurance. At this point in time, we wanted to talk about the potential expenses that we actually knew about. And historically, we provide a 1.5% experience step-up for both our classified and certified employees. This cost would be approximately $3.1 million in the upcoming school year. We've already been notified by the county retirement system that we are going to experience an increase from 24.06% to 26.95% July 1st. This has a cost of approximately $1.6 million. And also, we have recently acquired property at Park Place, and we are projecting, that is just a placeholder, but we are projecting our utilities to, for that building to be approximately $400,000. The usage that we have received from feedback from the utility company is much lower than that, but it's utility cost when the building has been unoccupied. So we're just trying to build in a little bit of cushion, and Logan Petit, our energy manager, is working with the utility company to try to get a better, a better estimate moving forward into the budget process. There are many unknown costs at this point in time. We still have like six months of revenue collections to make as well as the general assembly. I know the governor announces his budget tomorrow evening, so we're looking forward to getting that information. But things will look very different in April, so we just need to make sure that we're following the updates. But our preschool instruction, just in the past, we've had, we've had to grow our program because we've had more kids that qualify, and our grant has not grown. So therefore, the district is probably covering like 99% of the transportation cost as well as we're into a situation where we might possibly have to start providing instructional, some instructional cost as well if we continue to grow as a district and our population increases. We've talked about bond service payments, the potential each year. We meet with our bonding agency and we go over a schedule just to see what the payouts are for the upcoming school year. Each time we sell a bond, that changes our schedule. So I believe we're meeting with them in February to begin looking at those costs, those potential costs for the upcoming school year. We're also working with our people over in operations to, about the possibilities of moving portables and for overcrowding purposes. I went ahead and put rising health cost on here because last legislative session, that was really a concern for the school district. Normally, the state incurs those costs on our behalf, but we wanted to make sure that we were paying attention and that there's been some indication that, in the past, there had been some indication that they were planning on passing some of those costs down to the school district. So I went ahead and made sure that I made a note of that so we can pay attention to what's going on in the legislative session. Our transportation costs continue to go up due to increased ridership and expansion of the service area with our new neighborhoods. So we're working very closely with Marcus. And also, we're working with our operational folks regarding our fleet and equipment replacement cycles as well as our computer cycles and our paint cycles and our HVAC systems to make sure that we are doing some long-range planning with those and being able to be proactive and bringing those to your attention. We are also seeing a decline in funding related to our career and technical centers. I know that there has been a big push for academies, and our career and technical centers are getting a lot of publicity, but those programs continue to grow, but the state funding is shrinking. We're just getting a smaller piece of the pie. We have been in touch with risk management, who takes care of bidding out our district insurances, and he is expecting some increase in our fleet as well as our property insurance just because our fleet and property inventory are growing. And we are also working with our health and wellness area related to our nurse contract bid for the upcoming school year. And that is where we are at this point in time, and I will open the door up for questions.
Couple of questions. We had a great collection rate last year. Any, do we have any indication what that looks like, or we just don't know till the collection happens?
We'll know more probably with, if I can talk to David O'Neill, the PBA, we can, as we see the numbers come in, then we'll know more as we go along. But that, we really don't see, we don't count on a huge influx of that. Take the conservative approach more than anything else.
Absolutely. Historically, we get between a 95 and 98%, and I think last year was very extraordinary where we collected, we had over a 99% collection rate. So we were very fortunate last year.
Now, do we plan on, and maybe this is a Myron question, do we plan on, I hadn't heard much about bus drivers and that this year, we plan on working them year-round again through the summer? Is that the plan again? Myron, or Manny?
Yes, that'd be correct. That's correct, in terms of having them do.
The paint, the paint crews.
And all that. So the plan is to utilize that through the summer as well? Okay.
Thank you, Myron.
And your anticipation, John, is our bond rating will remain the same as last year? Or?
I do not see a change in that. We are very strong financially, healthy, and I suspect that bond rating will continue to be solid.
Then probably the most important question for me, Jelaine, is how fast in April will we have something?
Well, that's one of the reasons I've tried to start reaching.
Well, we have a new board member this year. We know the process. Listen, it's a tough process.
Absolutely. But it mostly depends upon how quickly we can get definite information from the legislative session, but we have purposely began to reach out to our larger departments to go ahead and start the discussion early so we can start wrapping our head and we can start working with our executive leadership team on prioritizing. So, you know, we're hoping, I know we bring it to you in May for approval, but we're hoping as we get more information from the state to give, bring back periodic updates. So maybe in March, we can start at least giving an update of where we are at this point in time. That'll give us a couple more weeks to, you know, let the budget unveil itself tomorrow, and then let's see what happens with the legislative session.
And I just want to clarify something. My reference before as far as the collection, of course, the foundation of that is assessed values of properties, right? So when we don't know that, we won't even know that first incline, or that first indication of what that looks like until April 1st.
Absolutely. You know, our last quarter, our last quarter of the year is still a huge quarter for us, especially with like our occupational license tax. And Rodney and I have already been discussing revenue projections and, you know, how we feel like we're going to end the year and that type of thing. So as, so therefore, we're paying attention. So we, as we get another month of revenue under our belt, we're meeting to see if there's any potential changes, and we'll be able to project it more moving forward. But, you know, historically, we have projected our revenue within 95 to 101% of our budget. So, I mean, we have our revenue projections down very sound.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, John. Thank you, Jelaine. We also have several informational items for the board to view this evening, including the school activity fund report, the annual wellness report, the biannual construction report, the personnel changes for January, and the position control document. If there are no questions about any of those items, that will conclude the board agenda for this evening, and we do not have a need to go into closed session.
All right, so a motion is in order to make the agenda dated January 27, 2020, on which the action has been taken at this meeting, part of the minutes, copied in the minutes verbatim.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by board member Morris, second by board member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by board member Love.
I'll second.
Second by board member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, board. And Jessica, I need, send me.
Some of our successes from last year's assessments was that we are identified as a three-star school. Presently, we have one area in which we are identified as ATSI. Last year, we were identified as TSI in five of the student groupings, which comprised African-American, Hispanic, free and produced lunch, special education, and English learners. We have reduced that this past year, in the 2019 year, down to one, which is our EL population. And that is the focus of our ATSI status. In reviewing the assessments and test scores, we have identified that we are still underserving our EL population at this time, and so that we are looking at our plan to help support those 54 students out of the 791 that we are servicing at this time. Last year's test scores indicated that in reading, that 36 scored in novice, 12 scored apprentice, 6 scored proficient, and zero at distinguished. So our goal as a school is to move our students from the novice indication to proficiency. As well as with our math, we have 22 that were scoring at a novice level, 28 scoring apprentice, and 3 scoring proficient, and one distinguished in math. In the next two slides is a breakdown of the data that our school reviewed from the 2018 school year and comparing it to last school year, 2019. And that gives you a breakdown of indicating where our kids were performing, and we were seeing that there was a trend where they were not moving from the novice apprentice indication to the proficient, distinguished. The same was viewed in our separate indicators as well. See in the next slide. So we are looking at our continuous improvement plan, and our goal for is indicated to increase the EL students attaining growth on the access from 57% to 75 by 2025. Our objective is to increase the percentage of EL students attaining growth in the access from 57.7% to 61 by May 2020. The strategies in which we are indicating growth or need for our school is design and delivery of instruction, the review and analysis, and apply the data, design and align the delivery and support. Some of the activities that we are utilizing at this time were the biannual progress monitoring of our EL students by looking at the progress monitoring data, the program Power Up data that we utilize with our students in the resource model, and it would be monitored by our EL teacher and district support and administration. We continue with ongoing professional learning and support with the PSPs, integrating academic vocabulary, the go-to strategies for EL students, and integrating EL objectives, and push in the EL co-teacher to assist with implementing strategies and focus on academic objectives. Some of the things that we were looking at as components of our turnaround development and support is that our school leadership participated in professional development and workshops with WIDA and access data analysis. We took that information and we shared that with our staff, and we further developed an action plan to support and increase student achievement with our EL population. We developed a 30, 60, 90-day plan with monitoring from the district chief. Looking at our critical resource inequities, presently, we have one EL instructor to utilize in a resource model, but through our studies in professional development, we learned that we needed to take that outside of that area and focus on the general ed as well. So it was a need for professional development for our academic content area staff to support that growth for our EL students in the general education classes by looking at instructional strategies, language objectives, and academic vocabulary. Some of our evidence-based interventions that we're utilizing was teaching a set of academic vocabulary. academic vocabulary and word intensity, integrating oral and written English language instruction into the content area teaching, and providing small group instruction intervention to help our struggling students in our EL population. Also, we utilize the peer tutoring and response groups. Some of the action plans to date that we are utilizing is the identification and implementing of the professional learning of one-to-two research-based academic language strategies, EL and SIO. We're also ensuring that the IEP and 504 accommodations are implemented for all EL students, because presently, we have forty-eight percent of our EL population that also have an IEP. Monitoring the usage of the academic language strategies through our walkthrough models and providing support to our staff, and then also the monitoring of the action plan with our chief on a weekly basis. And also identified a focus group of EL students to learn what works in the school and how they can be more involved in our school culture. And finally, we also wanted to increase our family and community engagement with families who, whose first language was Engli, was not English by partnering with our families in our community. The district support with an EL family advocate has been astronomical in the past three weeks because we have just begun our ESS, and we've actually had forty-five students who are in our EL population to participate that did not participate last year. We also have the EL support on a weekly basis in language arts and with our math teachers. We participated in a two-day review with KDE. They shared information with us in that we're also sharing with our staff to improve our processes to support our students. We've also finally have partnered with the Kentucky Avery's, who is actually coming in to work with us on our MTSS and our PBIS as well. And so that is our plan to focus on our EL population for ATSI.
Thank you, Principal Kirby. And again, the school-based decision-making council has approved this plan. I will open up to the board, Chair Daniels and others for questions.
I just want to thank you for the progress that you made from, you know.
Hey, Ray.
Thank you for the progress that you've made thus far, and then for identifying, my son went to that school, and identifying the actual, you know, and the students that you have to tackle, because I think that I helped push it where it needs to be. But the progress has been phenomenal. That's good progress made.
Thank you.
Just one question. And I wasn't familiar with Avery. So what is Avery? Kentucky Avery?
Kentucky Avery, because we're identified as ATSI, the State Department has afforded the opportunity to partnership with a program that's out of U of L. And this program comes in and they actually support with our MTSS as well as PBIS, and then also helping with the engagement that's going on in the classroom as well.
Okay. You know, I just want to say, I think this kind of underscores some of the conversations we've had when you think about all schools and how all schools can have a unique DNA. Because you started off your presentation and you said, we're almost like two schools within a school. But not only are you like two schools within a school, but when you really break down some of the populations and some of the needs, you really see the needs to be able, the need to be able to have this, these different strategies that take place of how you really address your students. And one of the things that we were talking about today with our legislators is that I think as a district, we've kind of moved with the discipline of knowing that we've got to do some things differently, but do them very systematically, evidence-based. And so I heard a lot of that kind of woven into the presentation as you're thinking about, how do I deal, not keeping the focus also on how do we work with our families as well? How do we continue to sit there and bring up our staff? So again, I'm like, Board Member Daniels, commend you guys on the approach and to sit there and go from five areas now down to one that you're focusing on, so that you guys are definitely making the achievement there as well. So thank you all for the work.
Thanks.
I also want to say, thank you for taking the whole child approach and bringing the families in, and I think it's a big deal that that many more families felt comfortable and welcome into the school, and buy-in from the parents is a big indicator of success. So I, I feel like this is a great plan.
All right. Thank you, partner. Appreciate that. Next, under Superintendent's report, I'm going to ask Mr. Gerald Thompson, our Chief Equity Officer, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Coach, Dee Dee Massey, our Intimate Coordinator of Mental Health Services and Social Workers, Chirica Smith, and Director of Grants Research and Accountability, Dr. Billy Buchanan, as they come forward. And they're going to share a presentation related to our work around catalyzing equity. So welcome, team. Good evening.
We're going to talk a little bit about catalyzing equity, and really, when you look at our equity statement, the four tenets of that statement, and how do we go about as a district, ensuring equity is a common thread across all of our work, every office, every department, every policy, every decision. And so our equity statement basically has four tenets, inclusion, access, process, and outcomes. And the goal is to ensure that every student has not just an equitable or equal access, inclusion, process, and outcome, but that they have a just and righteous process. And so as we look at equity, many people define it a whole lot of different ways, believe me. What we want to ensure is that last box, that last image, that all students, all families have the necessary accommodations to allow them to have a righteous and just learning environment. So thinking about disparities and disproportionality, again, many people have multiple definitions of what that looks like, given the circumstances that they're in. In our case, we're talking about educational equity, and how do we catalyze that and ensure that students have appropriate and sufficient educational support? So we're going to talk about that from a relational standpoint, some of it being causation, others being anecdotal. But we're not going to clearly define it from a research standpoint, but we want to give you a high-level overview of what that means. So I've given you a slide presentation at your desk. I can get it, go back, Bob.
Go back.
Right here.
There it is.
I'm going to have to invest in a more equitable clicker to ensure that we're efficient in the use of this. And so if you go to the next slide, Bob, disproportionality and disparity, when you look at the haves and the have-nots, much of what we see from an equitable standpoint deals with really poverty. As we've talked about over the past several, several months, where does children, where does where children live matter? In those concentrated area of poverty, you have the haves and the have-nots. So what you have at your desk is a infographic done by Ed Holmes, thanks for his work at EHI, for pulling this data on the east end area development, which is the geographical footprint that William Wells Brown sits in. And so in that, you'll see, and again, the screen does not do it justice, the blue is the high-level area of Fayette County, and then the purple is the William Wells Brown. How that data clearly shows the difference between disparities, housing disparities, income disparities, educational disparities, and all the things that happen when you see concentrations of poverty. And so we wanted to shed a light as we go through our work with Promise Neighborhoods, talking about what, how can we address education and ensure that justice is given to all of our students and families by eliminating and ameliorating, as Superintendent Cork would say, those conditions of poverty that not necessarily brings about learning disabilities for our children, but it creates barriers for learning.
I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson, from the infographic, could you just highlight, give some examples of the disparities I can bring?
Yeah, one of them, and I'll do it from a personal standpoint, which is the family households. If you look at the data on the family households, you'll see it broken down in chunks. Seventy-four thousand of our three-thousand, three-hundred-thousand-plus families are married families, and then you'll see it broken down by single household families. To your right, you'll see the combined census tracks for, tracks three and four, which makes up the tracks in the east end area. But I want to take you to the households of those single families, male versus female. And you'll see, in my growing up, we had three different households in the circle of the housing projects, which, which in essence became all three of our families. My father had three different families within the same circle in the housing projects. And so when you look at poverty, and we look at how, whatever our households look like, in those households, you typically will not find men as the head of households of those homes that are under HUD and Section Eight. And so when you look at the data, I think it's glaring, you'll see six hundred-plus single-family households that are headed by women, but a hundred single-family households that are households headed by men. What that does tell us in this area is that we now have to change our focus intentionally on how do we create systems and supports for women who are head of household, however, with male stu, male students in there that pretty much are probably running the home from a male perspective. So what does that look like for us as we look at, again, ameliorating barriers and supporting, putting resources and ports in for families? Much of that, again, as we talk about and move through the slides, we're going to get to some restorative practice conversations. What does that look like in the community versus what does that look like in our schools? And what intentional structures do we have to have in both places? Again, we spent seven hours with those students inside of our building. What does that now look like? And we continue to roll out our work with our collective impact and collective asset mapping to ensure that the community partners are directing the services intentionally based on data outputs like this that says, what is the makeup of those homes? What is the gender? What is the family poverty? What is the educational attainment? All those things are in this. And again, we can't spend all night unpacking all of those, but that's one point, is the head of households in those, in homes. If you want to talk more.
I'm just going to add, for further emphasis to the one point you highlighted in terms of single-headed households, and what that does for the diminished opportunity for children. So if you look at income, Fayette County, look at per capita, thirty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. You look at per capita in the William Wells Brown in this area that we're looking at, fifteen thousand three hundred ninety dollars. When you consider the median income for all of Fayette County, fifty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. When you consider just for this area, William Wells Brown, you're talking twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Right? So you really have the haves and the have-nots, but you got the tails of two lexidins. You have what Dr. King called "the other America."
So I just wanted to quickly jump in and add something to this that I think is rather important just more broadly. We are in a year of a decennial census, and all of the data that you're seeing here is developed by the U.S. Census Bureau. So it's really imperative that we, as a community, make sure that we get the message out to get people to participate and respond to the census, because all of the data that they collect ends up informing public policy in the same way that it's doing right here, right now.
That's right. Well, Billy, if I could add, add on to that. I heard somewhere today that per person not reported through census data, there's a cost per year of two thousand dollars of service costs from federal government and other, other dollars. If you do that, the census is only completed every ten years, and did that per year, per person, and did the, you know, exponential over that, it's significant dollars.
Yeah.
So you're, you're correct that, you know, we, we have to somehow continue to encourage people to respond to that. The census that will be April first, it's, it's right here knocking on our door. April first is when it happens.
I've already completed mine, so it took me about three hours.
No, you're going to discourage people. Don't say, don't say.
It's, it's comprehensive, so it inspires your attention.
But you have three ways to do it. Do by mail, you can do old-school mail or internet, and so on and so forth.
Print layout.
Yeah.
Any questions at this slide before we move on?
Next slide. Thanks.
So this slide is about our percentage of students suspended one or more times through December thirty-first of twenty-nineteen. There is a month lag because January is not over, and we always give our schools time to make sure that they have entered everything accurately. So based on our data through December thirty-first, you will see that we are performing in elementary school exactly where we were this time last year, but we are well below the national mean, which is that two-point-four-six gray box. In middle school, high school, and as a district total, we are at a lower level of percentage than we were last year, which means we have decreased the percentage of students who are suspended one or more time across our district, and we are still well below the national mean. Now, I will tell you that those national mean numbers have changed, and on a slide coming up, you'll see the older numbers, and I should have put them next to the new numbers so that you can see the difference. But that national mean is recalculated every two years. So this was recently calculated in the fall of two thousand nineteen, and they did it based off of the seventeen-eighteen school year. So that is across the nation at the end of the year what the percentage of students suspended would be. So you can see, even though middle school is still our highest, middle school across the nation is the highest. So our, our data in that way mirrors what we see across the country, even though we are still well below the national mean at this point.
And I think it's important, again, as you, as we juxtapose the data and the information with disparities and disproportionality, that the drive to change that, that trajectory has been intentional through the Office of Student Support Services, our Equity Office, as we do the equity collaboration. And again, if you look at what you define as a disparity, some people say the incident that they had with their single child against the whole district is a disparity. But we look at it from a holistic standpoint, where are there conditions and circumstances that appear to be a larger collection of incidences where we can drive the larger number and collection down? So I wanted to remind you again, as we go through the presentation, as you think about the data that you compare it to, again, what are you calling a disparity versus a disproportionality?
I think we're clicking at the same time. Go back one slide. There we go. In Fayette County, we don't want to just look at the percentage of students. The slide before, you were looking at the percent of students, but we actually want to see how many instructional days we are gaining back, because we are never, ever going to say that students will never be suspended. That's not realistic. What we do want to make sure that we're doing is that we're intervening at the appropriate time so that a suspension is not repetitive. We don't have kids being suspended over and over again, and also that those suspension days are decreasing so that they're not missing instructional time. So you'll see here, across elementary, middle, high, and the district, we have decreased the number of days that students have been suspended compared to this exact point last year, December thirty-first. And then overall, as a district, we have gained back nine-hundred-twenty-three-point-zero-one days of instruction back to the district. So this is calculated to the minute through our Infinite Campus data system, how many days are missed for out-of-school suspension by our students.
And I would just add that, yes, we do use exclusionary practices. We'll continue to use exclusionary practices. That's not going to change. And as such, obviously, the goal was to drive down exclusionary practices, the need for suspensions and the number of days for external suspensions, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we have accurate data. And I'll get to some ways that systems manipulate data, not this evening, though, in the interest of time. I'll wait. But systems manipulate data to make it appear that they're driving down suspensions, exclusionary practices, because of an external pressure. That's not what we do in Fayette County. We're about integrity. If it takes us longer to get where we're going and put systems in place, then we would travel that road. But we're going to do it the right way, not the fast and expedient way.
This slide here, I just wanted to give you some resources to look, if you wanted to look more into the national norms for suspension data, there's a web. There's a website there that you can check out that will give you lots of information. And then, again, those national norms that are listed there are the previous ones. They were just redone, and we literally just got that data point. And so elementary is no longer 2.51, it is now 2.46. Middle is no longer 7.57, it is now 8.03.
Exactly. It should go up.
It's going up. And high school is no, no longer 7.08, it is now 7.54. So you actually see the percentage of students going up across the nation, but in Fayette County, ours are decreasing.
And it's going up across the nation because they're keeping, well, it's only as good as the data.
Right.
But the data's trending, so it can, and, yes.
Yes. We actually, again, just wanted to give you some information around why our data practices are what they are. The state of Kentucky monitors student suspended out of school just because, based off of research, a student who is suspended even one time is less likely to graduate. So we're really looking at who these students are and what interventions are being provided for them so that whatever the behavior is that is causing them to be suspended is addressed. We don't want to just put students out because it's best for the teacher or because they're getting on our nerves. We are really drilling down in Fayette County to the why behind the behavior so that we can interrupt that behavior pattern and put them on success for graduation. It all cycles back to academics and our students excelling in a global society overall. And so it's not just about suspension, it's about prevention and intervention even after a student has been suspended even one time. We monitor this data monthly, and we present it to the executive leadership team so that all of our district leaders are aware of where the data is, where we're trending, and then we have seven PBIS coaches that work directly with the schools. And we not only look at the school-wide data, but we also drill down to students and help to build intervention plans and prevention plans for the school-based support staff. We have a service delivery model, and this is just information about what we give to our schools. I'm going to have to draw your attention to the red box, which is our Tier 3 stu-, schools. Those are picked based off of student suspension data, but also an annual assessment we give around behavior systems. If you go to the last bullet in that Tier 3 red box, you'll notice that wrapped into that support is CRTL and Restorative Practices Services as needed. So it's not just about going into the schools and telling them all the things that they're doing wrong. The PBIS and Equity Office collaborate with the Student Support Services team to help them to develop plans and interventions that work. That can include giving them training, but it can also include modeling and helping them to build schedules for kids and for teachers or other staff members in the building around behavior support.
And you'll see, as we go through the remaining slides, a little more insight on the restorative practice, but I wanted to bring attention to that triage. And oftentimes, if you go to a doctor and they ask you what your conditions are that's creating your illness, they do not focus on a single approach. They do give you multiple diagnoses to ensure that you don't walk out of there with something else. And so oftentimes, if you look at PBIS data, there's some root causes to multiple things. And so we, in our approach, wanted to ensure that if we go in, we're not just looking at suspensions or referrals, we're looking at the conditions that may have created those suspensions. Could be learning environment, could be cultural response to teaching learning, or the lack thereof. It could be implicit biases. And so while we're in, we're certainly taking a multi-pronged approach to ensure that we analyze the needs of the students and the learning environment so that we can fix the issues that are in place and not just take a single approach to it. So wanted to bring that to your attention.
I also want to bring to your attention that because of this board's approval of more PBIS coaches for Fayette County, if you look across yellow and green, you will see that we are now able to provide embedded coaching at those tiers as well. So in Fayette County, we're not just looking at the problem after it already exists, we are doing, being proactive about providing supports to teachers and staff and administrators, and that's because we are developing a team that has the knowledge base and the time to be able to go in and do that. And last year, with the addition of three new PBIS coaches to our team, we're able to provide more targeted supports for schools. This is just a slide so you understand our data decision rules around how schools were placed in different tiers. We use two data points. We use the Tired Fidelity Inventory, which is an assessment of a behavior system, and we collect that in Fayette County for all schools one time a year. And then we also use the percentage of students suspended one or more times, which I've already spoken about why that data point is so important. The risk ratio is calculated at the end of every year, so after school ends, I'll be able to bring you the 1920 data point. But as you can see, across the district, we are trending down on risk ratio. Risk ratio is your one ethnicity's comparison to another of how likely they are to be suspended. So what we did here was we just took black as compared to white students to give you a clearer view of that, those two ethnicities together. And I just put some information there about how it's calculated, and that's a national calculation, so we use the same formula that's used across the country for calculating that
The next slide, the next slide speaks to-
Go back. There.
To some of the work we've done historically in the area of restorative practice. And again, you've heard some conversations about this matter. This dates back well before even 2016. Erica Beatty's in my office.
This predates my tenure.
Absolutely. 2010, I went back and found some old Equity Council files where work was being done in this space as a recommendation from the Equity Council, as resulted to students at Martin Luther King Academy, for instance. And so how were we able to restore and create and foster positive relationships? So just wanted to give you a high-level overview of the work we're doing in this space and as we continue to train and use this as a tool, not as the single silver bullet for restoring great relationships, both at home and in school, across teacher to student, student to student, et cetera. So September 6th, 23rd, you can see, we trained multiple staff across the district in safer, saner schools, which is IIRP. We have additional training set up for this Thursday and Friday, Day 3 and 4, with the same vendor, around the same practices. And then additionally, as we roll out through the spring, all of our mental health professionals that have been hired will be trained in safer, saner schools. And additionally, we will be adding more school, school-level supports. And just thinking about that, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Every single school cannot and will not receive the same anecdote because they're not sick in the same way.
Exactly.
And so it'd be inequitable for us to apply a single breaststroke of the same application to every single school. So we look at need-based application and service delivery, and we'll continue to do that to support our schools and families.
And, please. I was just going to add that, well, yeah, each school has a school basic issue-making council, very similar to the local school council, right, in Chicago, which is home. So I'm curious about the schools you worked at. But any rate, so we do this in partnership with those SBDMs. Similarly, the board, if you recall, we adopted core curriculum. We adopted core curriculum in science. We use Amplify. That was the board adoption. No school has to use it. You cannot compel a school to use that curriculum. What we did is we created a process that's very collaborative that had principals, teachers, students, parents, members of our 16th District PTA who helped select. Right now, with Amplify, we have, I'm looking at, 22, 28, it's 18, even less than I, we're trying to go for 22. Only 18 schools are using it. Does that mean the other students are not getting science? Yes, they are. And we hold them accountable for teaching the standards, not so much using the program. So when you have an entity that says, "We want Fayette County to use the International Institute for Restorative Practice, Safer, Sane, across the system," that's asking you to usurp, what is it, 30, 90, 10, 20, about 30 years, 20 years, of statute because your CARE Act was put in place in 1990? You don't have the authority as the board to do that. And as superintendent, I'm going to stand for equity, equality, and justice, but I'm not going to do anything that intentionally violates statute and act without the highest degree of integrity because that's, that's a bad example for the students and families that I serve. Right? So again, it's working in partnership to be collaborative, and that's what we're doing in terms of our approach, through that system, our service delivery model. Okay? Things to know about research. Professor X.
So I think one of the things that we also wanted to do is correct some of the misinformation that's been put out there, whether it's intentional or otherwise, and that has been further promulgated through local news media when covering those events. And the first thing is, statistics don't prove anything. They can't. They're not deterministic. If you had a deterministic system, you would have physics. You know, you can describe exactly what the rate of an object falling is absolutely precisely all the time. What you can't do is apply that same sort of framework to human behavior. It's too complex. There's always going to be variance, and so that leads to that second point. Even though you can't say that statistics prove something in particular, or that any research about human behavior proves that something will cause some outcome to happen, what you can say is the research provides evidence about what's most likely to happen on average for a given intervention. So a lot of what people have discussed is really more, this is some evidence that could exist, and as we go further, I'll kind of unpack what some of that evidence actually means when you really dig into the research literature.
So this next slide really just gives you definitions of what some have defined restorative practice to be. Again, it's varying definitions, as Billy has mentioned, you know, cause and effect for what someone says a disparity is could change based on the evidence of all the science involved. And so given that, what we've done is look at the training models that IIRP has done, safer, saner schools, not, again, as a single bullet to solving the issues within our schools. And so you see, school districts are beginning to look at this work, some of it due to popularity, others due to lack of a comprehensive approach to addressing their needs. And as Ms. Massey and our team has explained, we do not use a single approach for solving our problems around de-escalating and lowering our referrals and suspension rates. So knowing that, Billy's going to also help us understand the difference between causation and anecdotal evidence that tells us one thing is happening as a result of another.
I don't know if I'll be able to do all of that in the short of my time, but I'll certainly be able to try and explain some of the research literature that's out there. Like you saw on that last slide, a lot of the research that's out there related to restorative justices' practices is not causal in nature. So it's correlational. All that a correlation means is when you see a value of one thing that's higher, a positively correlated relationship would mean another thing would have a higher value at the same time. Negative correlation would mean that would have a lower value at the same time. That's all. It doesn't actually provide any real information other than the direction that these two values have in response to one another. Beyond just being, not having extensive literature in experimental stuff and still having a little bit more limited quasi-experimental results, a lot of the literature that is out there about restorative justices tends to be qualitative in nature. Qualitative research is absolutely great and vital for explaining processes and how things work, you know, whether or not implementations went smoothly, those types of things. Not so great when it comes to trying to attribute a causal relationship to something, or even to generalize it beyond a very hyper-specific local scope. So one of the studies that starts to get into the quasi-experimental world, where economists love to live and play every day, shows this actual program, even in the best possible case scenario, you're talking about 2 one-hundredths of 1% of a reduction in suspensions for students.
Can you say that again?
Yeah. 2 one-hundredths of 1%.
Of 1%.
And that was over a 10-year-long study. And that's all that they could detect. And keep in mind, that's only explaining about 7% of the variance in the data. So causal research, especially quasi-experimental research, like 7% is actually pretty good for economists, but it's not necessarily explaining a lot of it. So you get some estimate of the effect, but it's still pretty noisy, and it doesn't really seem like it would be that substantive in terms of policy implications. From there, there's actually been a couple studies that are all kind of deriving from the RAND Corporation, one of which is this dissertation that someone did based off of the study in Maine. They looked at a few different of the affective components, basically how people felt about the program, and they couldn't really find any relationships with things. And this is in a randomized controlled experiment. So it's the same kind of concept that drug companies use before they come out with a new drug that goes to market. That's the type of research that's being used here. So it provides the best possible evidence about causal relationships. It could or could not generalize depending on how different the population is. I would say Maine to Kentucky, it's pretty dissimilar in general.
Exactly.
The size of the districts are much smaller on average, they're way wider across the board, with the exception of Portland and maybe Augusta, but mostly Portland.
Bang, oh, banger, little bit, but we're, we're one of the whitest states in the country.
Yeah.
And one of the poorest states, and the oldest state, looking at average age of our citizens back home. So yes, there's no comparison between the student population in Maine and the student demography here in Kentucky.
So the Acosta study was the broader study that RAND did across the state of Maine, and you can see, they didn't really find any results. And this is at the middle school level. One of the things that's interesting to note about this is that it's actually consistent with the study that kept being referred to implicitly in previous discussions about restorative justices, which is, at the middle school level, no one can find an effect for this program. In two major randomized controlled trials, they can't detect an effect. And with a randomized controlled trial, you can typically detect some kind of an effect relatively easily, if there is one.
And if, continue. No, I'm just going to add, as a former principal at all three levels, right? Elementary was the most important, high school was the most critical, middle school was the most difficult. And you saw where the norm data goes up for middle school, and middle school's really the toughest when it comes to dealing with creating a climate where students have a sense of belonging, of connecting with students. It's a challenge at the middle school level for a whole host of reasons. Middle school's very difficult, and one of the reasons is that the board, and I suggested the undertaking of reimagining our middle schools, so students do feel connected, and that's the work we're doing in addition to this.
So this was just an earlier kind of publication related to the work that happened in Pittsburgh. They found some initial loss of suspension in the second year of implementation, so not the first. Things like suspensions and attendance, they're pretty malleable. You can change those things pretty directly and pretty immediately. Things like learning outcomes, unless you're changing the curricula, really, you're talking about an indirect path. So when we think about things like culturally responsible- So when we think about things like culturally responsive teaching and learning, the only way that it has an effect on the child is to first have an effect on the adult who's doing the instructional delivery. Until it has the effect on the adult, there's no possible way the effect carry through to the children. So you wouldn't really expect those types of effects to happen on as short a time scale. Some of the other things to know about this particular study is that at the high school level, noting that RAND did suggest to attribute the high school level results with a little bit of caution due to the amount of attrition, it was actually really detrimental. So very negative effects at the high school level with the caveat that there was higher attrition at the high school level. At the elementary level, it had some slightly positive effects. And at the middle school level, no detectable effects. So whether or not you were doing restorative justices or practices or not at the middle school level, you couldn't actually identify if there was any difference between those schools.
And this was Pittsburgh Public Schools, which was an entire district that they looked at for the most part, and it's a district that has a population in terms of number of students they serve, very similar to ours, a medium-sized system, and the demography is closer to ours because it does have an urban architecture to it.
And the base for IIRP, Safer Sane at Schools, it's in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, so rightfully so. It's not as if they plucked up a vendor or company from across the country. It was relevant to their location, and likewise, we've sent our staff and team to, actually to Bethlehem. Erica Beatty has gone to be trained in the models, but we're building capacity again across our district so that we can support and create train-the-trainer-type models that can go into schools based on need.
All right. So finally, we wanted to show you all other ways in which we are supporting the whole child. Thank you. First, as of January 2020, we now have nine schools with healthy kids clinics.
You got a...
One more.
What are you...
Next slide.
There we go.
Nine schools with healthy kids clinics, and actually, the ninth just opened up in this month at LTMS. We have eight additional full-time nurses, and that's since school year 1415. We've also decreased the ratio of mental health professionals to students. You can see on that first line, elementary was 550 to one, middle 300 to one, high school 260 to one. Currently, we are at 270 to one in elementary, 246 to one in middle, and high schools are 232 to one. And we have hired, thanks to the 10-point safety plan, 50 additional district mental health specialists since last school year.
Yes, there. Board Member Love.
Well, you know, so just looking at some of the stats and just, okay, indulge me here, right? Causation correlation. Because now we do have a lot of mental health professionals in our schools, being able to help address some of the issues that students had in the past, and we didn't necessarily have the services. Because I think with our safety plan, one of the things that we heard a lot from our teachers and school administrators, having these additional health service providers inside the building, does go a long way towards helping to alleviate some of the issues that crop up. So I think as we think going forward, we really should see, the slide that you showed us earlier about the number of suspensions, et cetera, if we're able to sit there and deal with some of these issues that students are having, giving them the proper coping mechanisms, especially at the elementary level, we should be able to reduce some of the things that we're starting to see as far as incidents that will happen within the school.
And Ms. Bruce, please.
I would say that it's more accurate. I mean, if you only have a competency or a skill to address one portion of a student, and we add all the other services in place, it's not just to correctly service, it's to correctly assess. Because some of the instances that we weren't misdiagnosing were mental health, but they weren't being picked up because we didn't have the right professional working in that space. So it's more accurate and more appropriate to have those services there so the kids are getting exactly what they need, not just because we had only a few of those services before.
You know, I think Board Member Morris made the statement about, it was good to see that we're trying to address the needs of the whole child. And I think that's been the intentionality of this particular district, is really trying to say, it's just not one issue, but we're looking at the unique situations where people are coming from neighborhoods. So yeah, we can do some things within the school system, but how do we also go out within the community and think about, okay, so yes, we're working on this particular piece, but we need the community to partner with this. So this whole aspect of looking at it from a very, very comprehensive, where some schools, where some students may not necessarily need those services, but others may, we're able to provide.
And that's a great point, Board Member Love, is that we're, and Board Member Morris for capturing it, this approach is about the whole child. And if you go back five years ago, I guess 2015, that wasn't, and you've been here reading this book longer than I have, we talked about it, but our works didn't reflect it. Now, when you see nine schools with healthy kid clinics, you look at the expansion of our health clinic at LTMS, right, to a middle school, serving those students that are already at the elementary level moving up, you see the additional school nurses, full-time, because that's a health issue, along with our mental health professionals. So all of that, and we didn't get to, is the socio-emotional learning curriculum that we roll out. So it's not only dealing with trauma, dealing with adverse childhood experiences, it's just going to one person. Now we're going to equip and be more proactive, so we have a curriculum that teachers teach as part of the core to every child. So again, it's all of that working together, and of course, including our families as well.
Well, I think, and it also just underscores how schools have changed. I mean...
Amen, yes.
You know, before, you could be a great instructor and just kind of come in and teach. Now you have to do, have these other skill sets that you have to have in the classroom when it comes to classroom management, those types of things as well, and how do you do your assessments in those particular areas?
And that could get overwhelming for a teacher.
Yes, it can.
And that's for a later time. I'll show you some examples of when that gets overwhelming for our educators.
So in addition to the district mental health specialists, our counselors, our social workers, we also have partnerships with outside agencies, outside mental health agencies, and every school since 2014 and 15 has had one, at least one therapist from an outside agency in the school working as well. We also introduced a national model for our partial hospitalization program. We partnered that with The Ridge, and that's actually housed this year at TLC. It started at Bryan Station High School, and we're able to support mental health services during the day, and then also academic needs as well in that program. We've had a 211% increase in the number of documented interventions provided by our student support team from five years ago. And they're all housed in Infinite Campus in a central location, and we can pull the data very quickly and easily, as well as an additional, well, I can't do the math, from 27 officers to 62 since 1415. So while we're supporting the whole child, of course, we want to give our teachers and our staff the skills and the knowledge to be able to help our students as well. So 50% of our schools are trained in trauma-informed care, and this is since 1415. 1,600 additional staff members trained in youth mental health first aid, and these numbers are still growing. We're still training in these. So right now, as of January 27th, these are the numbers, but we're continuing to have these trainings all summer and all school year. We've adopted an evidence-based curriculum called Prepare for our crisis response team members, and we just had our last Prepare training that was two days. It ended last Friday, and we trained an additional 30 crisis team members in that curriculum. 25 additional student support members were trained in CBITS, which is cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools, as well as 54 additional staff members trained in TARGET, again, another trauma-based therapy for our staff. Let me do the last one. For PBIS, it's trained as school teams that are then charged with going back to their school and implementing, along with side their district behavior support coach. And so in 1415, we had 32 schools trained, and as of the end of last school year, we had 69 schools trained. We're still working on Brenda Cowan. We needed them to finish their building first, and now we're ready to go in there and really dig in with them as well.
All right. I think we, thank you, team, once again, for informing the board, but more importantly, informing our public as to what we're doing to address the needs of the whole child. Thank you, team. I give you a hand for that. Next, I'm going to, it's a tough act to follow, Myron, because all you got is construction progress report that you need to bring forward. Okay, make it exciting. Okay, let's dig in. Okay, where's some dirt? I've been past 1555 Georgetown. All right.
All right. Report on our construction projects here. There's the Steam and Success Academies. You'll see we're roughly 26% into that project, and will be opening in October, this fall, a rendering of the facility. For the month of December, we've continued to build in site demo work as required for new work. We've had our flowable fill anchor bolts and foundations continue at the new columns. We've had structural steel completed in Area B and began in Area A. Our metal stud wall framing and door installation continued in Area B and began in Areas A and C. Our sound baths and gypsum board topping out of walls began in Area B. Our geothermal drilling, our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing underslab rough ends and HVAC ductwork has all continued, as well as our electrical rough ends at the primary duct For this month, in January, we're building and site demo will continue as well, as well as the flowable fill and anchor bolts. Our structural steel will be completed in Area A and continue into Area C, and the second floor metal decking will start. Our metal stud wall framing and door installation will continue in Areas B and C, as well as the sound baths and gypsum board topping out. Geothermal drilling continuing, and as well as the mechanical and electrical and plumbing rough ends and HVAC. Our electrical rough ends and the primary duct bank installation will also continue. And a few photos. So we're making good progress. Manny, get a shot there. For our Bryan Station softball fieldhouse project, snapshot of our partners and budget, roughly 67% complete. We did have to push that back in the next month, but we will have them ready at the end of next month. For the month of December, we completed our exterior brick walls. We've installed roof sheathing and shingles. Our interior plumbing work was in progress, and we began our mechanical system installation. Same thing for January here, completed our mechanical systems. We've installed our specialties and began our interior finishes and started installing our ceiling and light fixtures. And a few pictures of that project as well. Our secure vestibles are moving forward. Snapshot of our construction architect partners and our general contractor. Again, this will run through December of 2020. For a general overview, our construction is ongoing at the Professional Learning Center, 95% complete. Winver Middle, 75%. The Learning Center at Price Road.
TLC.
Price Road. Is 15% complete, and Dixie Elementary is 15% complete. Our pre-construction meetings were held, and construction will start at Lafayette next month, as well as SCAPA. Pre-construction meetings are scheduled for February at the Preschool Center and Southside Technical Center. And we have four sites where construction is coming to conclusion. Bryan Station, we're just waiting to get the punchlines reviewed. Booker T. Washington, our new interior doors have been installed, the new reception area and gypsum board has been painted, and our new camera and communication systems have installed. For Crawford Middle, our new interior doors have been installed and walls have been painted. Northern Elementary, our new hollow metal frame glazing doors have been installed to create the secure vestibule, and a new opening is revised to create the reception area has been completed as well.
Wow. I got to get out and, I was at Northern before the work started.
Okay.
And looking how, when you walk in...
Absolutely.
I got to see what you did.
Bringing it down, Manny.
Oh, man.
Check you there, the reception desk. For the month of January, at the Professional Learning Center, all of our demos complete. The metal frames and glazing are installed and create the vestibule. The new framing and gypsum board is installed and painted in the reception area as well. Winver Middle, new exterior metal frames and our doors have been installed. The existing floor slopes, so the frames were modified in the field to align with other frames. New interior hollow metal frames and drawwater nearing completion, and installation of a new push button and remote release from existing reception area has begun. And again, some pictures there of the work.
Look at that.
It's Bryan Station. It looks like it was all part of the original building.
I'm going to see it on Wednesday.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's a shot of Booker T. Washington.
Wow.
So again, a part of the hardening the building, but softening the approach as well. So we're very excited. Professional Learning Center. Winver Middle. That concludes my report.
Any questions, Board?
Myron, you might have said it already. When do we expect all of them to be complete?
December. December 2020. December 2020.
All right. So next is our 10-point comprehensive safety investment plan, so we can inform our community and how we're strategically using this investment.
Snapshot of the bullet points of the plan for My items, the middle and high school ID badges have been implemented. Our new visitor management system, Raptor, has started as well. It's already being utilized at Frederick Douglass and Carter G. Woodson, and other high schools will soon follow. The Crisis Grow platform has been implemented at 40 schools with ongoing training district-wide. Every principal has been trained, and we actually spoke to the LRC about this last week. They're very interested in this particular product and maybe doing something statewide regarding that. So Mr. Babich and his team are instrumental sort of helping us coordinate all of that. So our D-Tex door alarms are in place, and school protocols have been established. Door access points have been implemented at all school facilities. Security cameras have been installed at all schools now, and DVR camera quarters and updates are completed as well. We covered the secure vestibles, but just a snapshot there, again, of the work that is taking place, and for the public that wants to see that, that will all be a part of the presentation. The metal detectors and security ambassadors have been implemented at Douglas, Dunbar, Tate's Creek, Bryan Station, Lafayette, and Steam Academy, and Henry Clay will start in fall of 2020 to coincide with the secure vestibule project.
Good evening.
We send it, 62 officers with the 63rd offer went out today. We anticipate him accepting tomorrow, so we would go to 63. We stepped, once the 63rd position is filled, we have two remaining for the present time, and we've got a pretty good start on those with some previous employed police officers and actually some new that we may send to the academy. So we're still working through those. This is Officer Daniel Hart. As you can see, he's got two uniforms on. He's actually an Iraqi veteran himself, and he does some work with the post-critical incident seminar, which is something that offered up to our officers today that have been in either critical incidents, job-related, military-related, which he has been in both. And it's a seminar that I really think is some good self-care for our first responders. And so he was asked to be the, on the poster, and so he is appearing at Department of Criminal Justice to advertise the event, and then other places where law enforcement, other police stations and police sectors that will have this to make people aware of that, so. And this, this next part is actually, when Myron, Shelley and I actually got to go to the Council of School Attorneys in New Mexico to present back in October, we used Robert Lewis's, or had looked at Robert Lewis's video series on each area. And so Shelley had the good idea that, let's just make a synopsis of all the things, kind of like a short video, but kind of sums it all up as far as our activities and how we interact, and really kind of gets to the culture and climate of our police department and our schools. And so he did a really good job in just a short amount of time. We played the video at the presentation in New Mexico and got a really good response. Got a lot of positive feedback after that, and we've actually had requests just to see the video, send it out. So we're going to be able to play that tonight, and I'll show you what we were able to show there.
We feel like it's a foundation to build with interaction.
We feel like it's a foundation to build with interaction with police, so that when they're adults and they get out outside of the school, they'll be able to interact with police also. So we're trying to be role models for these kids and just be a positive influence on their lives.
He is a wonderful police officer. He's really nice, really good. Take care everyone.
The best agent she ever worked for, in all honesty. What we do on a daily basis as far as, you know, getting to know them personally, and what they go through at the house, what they do on a daily basis here.
Oh, we're telling you, man, keep up the lights.
Hey, hey.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey.
Just talking to them, just interacting with them, it's what we do. You know, kind of break the mold of an officer presence, oh, here comes a cop, you know, just get out of the way, or just get out of here, kind of thing.
The more you can talk to the kids and work well with your principals and administrators and other teachers, the easier your job is.
You're building relationships with kids, you know, some who don't have fathers, some who's looking for older brothers, you know, some who just may be needing a hug or a pat on the shoulder.
You get close to these kids and they surprise you sometimes. She was a sixth grader when she gave me this card, and a subway card, because it was subway across the street from Jesse Clark. And I called her dad and I said, I just wanted to tell you, you know, what an awesome daughter you've raised, just a very special, very sweet girl.
I think the students feel safer when they see us. So just not only seeing us, but knowing us, knowing our name, knowing that they come to talk to us, helps them feel safe. Actually helps them open up a little bit, come and talk to us more.
Take care of my school kids.
I see them every morning, and I love saying good morning to them, love talking to them because, you know, I can come to school and know I'm in a safe environment.
Yes, yes.
Pending your questions, it's my presentation.
All right.
Manny, can I make a recommendation that we send this to the legislators that we met with earlier today?
Yes.
Because one of the things that we had talked about, I'll prolong the night, but we talked about with them was the way in which we have a law enforcement group and how it interacts. And the chief and I were talking before the board meeting, how important that is, because our officers are not necessarily just like off the street, but they are part of our schools and how they build relationships with our, our students. And so as people are thinking about resource officers, and you see all this stuff in the nation, and these mishaps that are happening, you have to wonder, do they really have a keen understanding of what's happening in the building, or they were just assigned for the day and they don't even have a relationship with the kids? So, I think the model that we have is such a great model to really talk about this. So I think the legislators, what we were talking about today, would have an opportunity to see that in action.
Agreed. I'm just gonna ask Ms. Stefan Dahl to get the video and send it out to Fayette County delegation. Yes.
I'll give you an update on the mental health and professional behavioral support professionals. We are still working with the minority recruiter and the Equity Office on recruiting as diverse candidates as we can, and we're especially looking for Spanish-speaking therapists, so if you know any, send them our way. We had our orientation for the new seven employees on January the 6th and 7th, and as of January 8th, we have 50 district mental specialists, 39 at elementary schools, four serving middle schools, and six serving high schools, and one itinerant position that responds to any school that needs something in a quick manner. Just wanted to give you some statistics on the breakdown of hiring. We have, out of the 50, 48% are African-American, Caucasians 42%, Asians 2%, Middle Easterns 2%, and Latinos 6%.
Okay, so the question becomes, how come our district mental health reflected the demographic of our district? And we have some challenges doing that in terms of our, at the school level. Well, these positions were hired at the district level. And so, we were able to make sure that we hire with that intentionality, and we hire for talent. So some amazing talented educators of color as well. So we're very pleased. We still need more bilingual, Spanish-speaking district mental health professionals.
We'll take a French-speaking too, just to.
Bonjour.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Conga-lease.
This is just a bar graph of what I just went over. In case you want to see it that way. Just breaking down gender, we have 79% female and 21% male. So that's, believe it or not, with this area, 20% male is really good.
That's high.
Really good. So, and then just some other, there's a bar graph of that statistic. And then just other statistics, we have 50 district mental specialists, 5.5 African-American males, and four Spanish speakers. And that's the latest recruits.
Let me get that picture. I know I have it because I was in the picture, but that's a great-looking team, our mental health professionals there.
Yeah, so on the SEL curriculum adoption, the principals have reviewed and looked at the material. We now have an elementary, middle and high SEL adoption. Our SEL coordinator at the district level is working with the principals and their SBDMs for approval, and as that comes around, we've already scheduled our trainings and ordered materials for elementary, we'll be ordering middle and high in the next couple weeks. But the elementary training for the SEL is March the 16th and 17th. The middle school training is April the 16th, and the high school training is March the 24th and 25th.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to update you on our comprehensive adolescent assessment and health promotion, to follow up on our presentation from last month, Manny always said if there's not a picture, it didn't happen. So here is LTMS, Open for Business. There's a shot of the clinic right there.
Oh my gosh.
And, so here, social media monitoring. In the last 30 days, the, our system has scanned 24,057 posts, it's an average of 802 a day. They have looked at 2,480 images, an average of 83 a day, and they have sent us 10 alerts, none of which required follow-up. But we did review all of them as a team and determined what they were really talking about. One of them was talking about Fortnite, another was talking about some political issues at the state level. There was one that was concerning, but it was a different, it was a different school in another state by another name, so we made a phone call to make sure that they were aware of it, so, nothing that required any local follow-up.
Thank you, partner. Quick update on the education and training. As you all have heard over the past couple of months, we're working through Collective Impact across the city with several partners, and much of that work will involve this work around how we create safer routes to school and from school to home, as well as services that we can help the community identify, that you saw in that William Wells Brown infographic, the family needs. And so the education and training really will focus on some of the work the Collective Impact Group is doing as they roll out their timeline, but be aware that we do have a FAMU in partnership with the Urban League coming up, the LIFT Conference in March. We plan and will elevate this project. We gave out more than 3,000 safety guides, but what we want to do is build family guides now for middle school. You heard the data earlier, talk about that being a tough group to move when it comes to restorative practices and behaviors, et cetera. So we want to publish some work to help support families on helping their, understand what their kids should know or be able to do, both at home and in school. And so the LIFT Conference is gonna be March 21st at the BCTC campus. As you all know, we did our first conference there circa 2016, where we developed a portrait of a graduate. Dr. Koppo, who's the new president there, has invited us back and certainly appreciate the partnership there. November, as you can see, the LINK Conference, I think I sent it out to the group today, I'll send it out to the board. We have a LINK partnership, Lincoln Youth, and that focused this training will be on restorative practice, actually. So we're gonna have a focus with those groups. The first one we did on the 19th focused on mental health. McKenzie and Rainey did some work there, as well as several other partners from the community.
So, was that, was that another FAMU, the one that you were talking about?
Yes, we have one coming up March 21st.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll send that out to the board members, the flyers, as well as the LINK. It's a great partnership. All right, thank you, team. And before I turn it back over to you, to our Chair Daniels, I just want to add, tomorrow, through our partnership with the Chamber and the Business Education Network, we will hold our Career Expo. We're excited about that. I just say at the Lexington Convention Center, I know Heritage Hall, there's a whole bunch of little, little, big places in there, but we'll be in one of them, be easy to find. And also a reminder to our families and to the public, this Saturday is the Kentucky American Water Science Fair once again, so come on out, and yes, you can clap for both of those, right? Clap for both of those, for our students. And with that said, I turn the meeting back over to you, Chair Daniels.
Thank you Superintendent Call, and I think, talked to Betsy at Business Education Network, expecting 1,200 9th graders tomorrow.
Yes.
So phenomenal turnout.
What time does that start tomorrow?
I think it's from 9, looking at, is it 9 or 9:30?
I think it is 9, yeah.
Who, where's James? What time?
It's off about 9 o'clock with Bryan Station and then around 2:30, sir.
Thank you, sir. There we go.
Darrell, you're welcome to come for lunch, lunch by 11:30. All right, thanks everybody for all the presentations this evening. So at this time, we have remarks from citizens. Members of the public may address the board during this period set aside by the board without submitting an item for the agenda. No action shall be taken during this portion of the meeting on issues raised by employees or public unless deemed an emergency by the board. So please note, the speakers will be, well, I don't know, do we have any speakers, first of all, before you lay down the groundwork, so I don't need to go through that.
We don't have the cards, so we don't have any.
Okay. All right, so we do not have any speakers that are speaking on non-agenda items. So let's turn to, at the end of the meeting, members of the public who have signed up prior to the meeting are invited to address the board on any topic of district-related concern that is not on the official agenda for this meeting. Do we have anybody signed up for anything?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. We'll move past that as well, and let's move to approval of routine matters. We need to approve the minutes. Hopefully, board members have had a chance to review the minutes from December the 5th, 2019, as well as the minutes of December 16th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Passes, routine matters pass. Need a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. And so that brings us to action items. And I guess we've already had a chance to hear from Principal Kirby about her plan at Bryan Station Middle, on ATSI improvement plan, and with no further questions, can we get a motion to approve the ATSI school improvement plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the improvement plan, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0, Tanya. And I believe this is an item that was reviewed at our planning meeting, but we have a motion to order to approve a contract with General with Law Office.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes 3-0, Tanya. And we pulled two contracts out, right?
Yes, you did.
Pulled those out.
Should be on page 91.
91, okay. So we need a motion to approve the acceptance of the offer of assistance extended by the School Facilities Construction Commission for $229,920. Annual debt service on our bonds to be sold for proposed construction or major renovation of facilities outlining the approved district facilities plan, subject to the approval of KDE, Driski Facilities Branch, per provision 702-KR4.160.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 3-0. Now we have a motion to approve the 220 to 2022 Friski Continuation Program Plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0, Tanya. That takes us to...
Monthly financials.
Monthly financials. Is Mr. Jackson here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The monthly financial report for the month of December 2019 reflects as follows. Our fund balance is $160.7 million, revenues approximately $336 million, and expenses approximately $175 million. General fund overview comparing 2020 to 2019 fiscal year shows that our fund balance was $167, $160.7 this fiscal year versus $165 million last year. I will go into details a little bit later about that, but it's approximately $4.3 million less than same time last year. All funds combined, a total revenue of approximately $474 million versus expenditures of $249 million, net fund balance of $225 million, as indicated by the black arrow. This slide shows all funds, Fund 1 through Fund 7,000. Only fund that's in a negative is related to capital outlay, and as I told y'all before, we receive money in the fall and then we get the second part of that money in the spring. The revenue analysis reflects $336 million for this fiscal year versus $308.5 million for last fiscal year, thus we're up $27.5 million in comparison. A deeper analysis, subtracting out the beginning balance, reflects $265 million for this fiscal year versus $256 million for last year, with $9 million when you take out the beginning balance. Total expenditures for the 2020 fiscal years, $175 million versus $143.5 million. Expenses are up $31.5 million compared to the same time last year. This is primarily due to vendor payments up $7 million, and salaries and friends up $8.5 million. The biggest jump is related to the timing of fund transfer expenditures in excess of $16 million for construction and renovation projects that we started off early this year. Balance sheet summary reflects balance sheet of $165.5 in assets, $8 million in liabilities. Our position relates good, relates to assets versus liabilities. Marcy Thomas, Dorothy Smith and John Price Fund are reflected as shown. Are there any questions or concerns?
Any questions, concerns, board members?
All right, if no questions, the motion order to accept the monthly treasures report of revenue expense reports as presented to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports.
I'll second.
Board Member Morris made the motion, Board Member Love, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 3-0, thank you.
Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Our next item for your consideration, board, this evening, is a resolution regarding the state budget, revenue projections, and the creation of new tax expenditures. As you may recall, the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents drafted this base resolution for school boards to consider in order to send a unified message to Frankfurt about the need to fully fund public education. I shared the draft with you at last, this month, at our planning meeting and prior to. It's been updated to reflect the 2020 legislative priorities for Fayette County, and for discussion with the board. Do you have the, you have the resolution?
Yes.
In your package? Okay, I know Lisa sent it to you.
You guys were at a legislative luncheon today, sir.
Yes.
I'll take it that we have solidified our position.
Yes, sir. And the state of budget.
Solidified it, echoed it.
Echoed it.
Everything we could, right.
And that state of budget addresses tomorrow evening.
And the state of. And the state of the budget, so we'll know something fairly quickly.
Yes, sir.
Kinda, 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 okay. Well, the motion is in order to adopt the resolution unless you have any further questions. I'm sorry to cut that off. Any questions? Any further questions at all? Okay. Motion is in order to adopt the resolution regarding the state budget revenue projection and creation of a new tax expenditures.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Love, second by Board Member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three oh.
Thank you, board. And that concludes our action items, I believe, for this evening, but we have informational items. And our first informational item, going to ask our general counsel, Shelly Chatfield, and health and wellness coordinator, Debbie Bowen, to come forward to tell you more about the wellness policy that's before you for a first reading tonight. So there's no action, just a first reading, obviously discussion, feedback, et cetera.
Right, I'm just here to remind you, policies are read twice before you vote on them. So this is your first reading, and Ms. Bowen's going to take it from here.
When we had our last school, school lunch audit, we were asked if we had reviewed our wellness policy anytime soon. We had not. They requested that we do that. We pulled together a very large committee of students, community members, teachers, and administrators. Not everyone met at every meeting, but we did get input from everyone. We met four times, and the product that we have is attached. The first change that they requested was that they felt that middle and high schools should also have wellness committees, so we have added language in there, not requiring them to have wellness committees, but requesting that they have them. The next change, we changed his or her to the more neutral their pronoun. Below that, we changed farm visits to farm-to-school events and agricultural education. We just felt that was a more accurate description of what was actually going on. School foods, where we link it to farm-to-school, we defined that as foods sold in school. And then the next one is change food marketing to marketing practices that relate to a healthy lifestyle, rather than just limit it to food. We changed physical activity and physical education. We took out physical education because physical education was never mentioned in that part of the policy. A teacher caught that. We love our teachers. The next change, we had this language elsewhere in policy, and we decided to insert it in this policy as well, so that it is apparent to all that this is an important thing to our district. We also said that we were going to accommodate both student food allergies and religious ethnic and cultural diversity. We had not had student food allergies in there as part of our accommodations in the cafeteria. Then we also changed plan to policy or plan, because some schools have policies, some just have a health plan. So we wanted to differentiate, some of our school programs can do a health or wellness The last thing that we changed, and we want to highlight this, our child nutrition director explained to all that were there what the rules were for the USDA food or school lunch, National School Lunch program. Some of our students added their schools in that they were selling items that weren't in this particular timeframe. So we're going to be paying more attention to that, and our students are going to help us make sure that we're following our own rules, and they have agreed to be our partners in that. So that is, those are the sum total of the policy changes that we're making.
Woo.
Thank you.
You will vote on these next month.
Thanks again. And our next informational item, going to ask our budget director, Jolene Mullins, and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. John White, to come forward to present the 2020-2021 draft budget. Just a draft, right? Let's emphasize that. It's just, you got to have the conversation. And our approach, just so the board and the viewing public understands, is we took an as-is approach, assuming that there's going to be no change or increase in funding coming out of Frankfurt. So we took an as-is. That's the plan, where you plan for the worst and you hope for the best. But hope's not a strategy, but a plan is. So we're planning for an as-is state when it comes to funding.
Yes, that, before we get started, it is just a preliminary, very early discussions. As was mentioned earlier, the governor will be giving his proposed budget tomorrow night, so we'll all be watching and listening for that. But tonight, this is preliminary of things, a lot of things that we still don't know yet, but this is to set up the process or the outline of the timing. Tonight is a discussion that's required. There's no approval or anything on your part, but it's just informational only on the draft working budget for FY '21.
As John alluded, tonight, we just want to start the budget discussion with the board to let them know the work that's currently being done and where we are at this point in time. We just wanted to start off by sharing a timeline. We are, the budget process has a lot of regulations that were under timelines, so we wanted just to share a little bit of that with you. We're required by law to begin the discussion with the board by January 31st every year. The budget discussion, it's been, we have been working on next year's budget since probably October. We've been working with the DPP office. Last week, we were able to provide just a preliminary enrollment projection to our principals to give them an opportunity to provide feedback before they receive their actual staffing allocation before March 1st. So that's in place. We're already working with our instructional folks, as well as we're beginning to reach out to our department managers of our larger departments and going ahead and starting the discussion earlier than normal. We are required by law to provide our schools a staffing allocation, which is their Section 4 and Section 5, which is their classified and certified staff, as well as their Section 6, which is their operating budget by March 1 of each year. So we are full, in full throttle, working on those to make sure that we can meet those And as you already know, that we bring the tentative budget to you in May of each year. And we're also required to submit our AFR by July 30, by July 25th of each year. And we receive our local tax rates in August, and we finalize our working budget by September 30th of each year with you guys. And when second month data is available in October, we go back in and we adjust our schools' second month, based on their second month or Section 6 allocations, which is their operational supplies. We just wanted to share with you a couple of, I believe it was last year, maybe two years ago, the legislative session came out with a cap on CERS employer contributions and increase. They can increase no more than 12% over the next five years. And we have already received our increase for next year. So we just wanted to share with you what that kind of data looks like historically. And we currently have a KT RS employer contribution of 3%, and that covers employee health insurance. At this point in time, we wanted to talk about the potential expenses that we actually knew about. And historically, we provide a 1.5% experience step-up for both our classified and certified employees. This cost would be approximately $3.1 million in the upcoming school year. We've already been notified by the county retirement system that we are going to experience an increase from 24.06% to 26.95% July 1. This has a cost of approximately $1.6 million. And also, we have recently acquired property at Park Place, and we are projecting, that is just a placeholder, but we are projecting our utilities to, for that building to be approximately 400%, I mean $400,000. The usage that we have received, from feedback from the utility company, is much lower than that, but it's utility cost when the building has been unoccupied. So we're just trying to build in a little bit of cushion. And Logan Petit, our energy manager, is working with the utility company to try to get a better, a better estimate moving forward into the budget process. There are many unknown costs at this point in time. We still have like six months of revenue collections to make, as well as the general assembly. I know the governor announces his budget tomorrow evening, so we're looking forward to getting that information. But things will look very different in April, so we just need to make sure that we're following the updates. But our preschool instruction, just in the past, we've had, we've had to grow our program because we've had more kids that qualify, and our grant has not grown. So therefore, the district is probably covering like 99% of the transportation cost, as well as we're into a situation where we might possibly have to start providing instructional, some instructional cost as well, if we continue to grow as a district and our population We've talked about bond service payments, the potential each year. We meet with our bonding agency and we go over a schedule just to see what the payouts are for the upcoming school year. Each time we sell a bond, that changes our schedule. So I believe we're meeting with them in February to begin looking at those costs, those potential costs for the upcoming school year. We're also working with our people over in operations to, about the possibilities of moving portables and for overcrowding purposes. I went ahead and put a rising health cost on here, because last legislative session, that was really a concern for the school district. Normally, the state incurs those costs on our behalf, but we wanted to make sure that we were paying attention and that there's been some indication that, in the past, there had been some indication that they were planning on passing some of those costs down to the school district. So I went ahead and made sure that I made a note of that, so we can pay attention to what's going on in the legislative session. Our transportation costs continue to go up due to increased ridership and expansion of the service area with our new neighborhoods. So we're working very closely with Marcus. And also, we're working with our operational folks regarding our fleet and equipment replacement cycles as well, as well as our computer cycles and our paint cycles and our HVAC systems to make sure that we are doing some long-range planning with those and being able to be proactive and bringing those to your attention. We are also seeing a decline in funding related to our career in technical centers. I know that there has been a big push for academies and our career and technical centers are getting a lot of publicity, but those programs continue to grow, but the state funding is shrinking. We're just getting a smaller piece of the pie. We have been in touch with risk management, who takes care of bidding out our district insurances, and he is expecting some increase in our fleet as well as our property insurance, just because our fleet and property inventory are growing. And we are also working with our health and wellness area related to our nurse contract bid for the upcoming school year. And that is where we are at this point in time, and I will open the door up for questions.
Couple of questions. We had a great collection rate last year. Any, do we have any indication of what that looks like, or we just don't know till the collection happens?
We'll know more probably with, if I can talk to David O'Neill, the PBA, we can, as we see the numbers come in, then we'll know more as we go along. But that, we really don't see, we don't count on a huge influx of that. Take the conservative approach more than anything else.
Absolutely. Historically, we get between a 95 and 98%. And I think last year was very extraordinary, where we collected, we had over a 99% collection rate. So we were very fortunate last year.
Now, do we plan on, and maybe this is a Myron question, do we plan on, I hadn't heard much about bus drivers and that this year, we plan on working them year-round again through the summer? Is that the plan again? Myron, or Manny, or?
Yes, that'd be correct. That's correct, in terms of having them do...
Okay.
The paint, the paint crews.
And all that. So the plan is to utilize that through the summer as well?
The paint crews are going to be part of the...
Okay.
Thank you, Myron.
And your anticipation, John, is our bond rating will remain the same as last year, or?
I do not see a change in that. We are very strong financially, healthy, and I suspect that bond rating will continue to be solid.
Then probably the most important question for me, Jolene, is how fast in April will we have something?
Well, that's one of the reasons I've tried to start reaching out to...
Well, we have a new board member this year. We know the process is, listen, it's a tough process.
Absolutely. But it mostly depends upon how quickly we can get definite information from the legislative session. But we have purposely began to reach out to our larger departments to go ahead and start the discussion early, so we can start wrapping our head and we can start working with our executive leadership team on prioritizing. So, you know, we're hoping, I know we bring it to you in May for approval, but we're hoping as we get more information from the state to give, bring back periodic updates. So maybe in March, we can start at least giving an update of where we are at this point in time. That'll give us a couple more weeks to, you know, let the budget unveil itself tomorrow, and then let's see what happens with the legislative session.
And I just want to clarify something. My reference before as far as the collection, of course, the foundation of that is assessed values of properties, right? So when we don't know that, we won't even know that first incline, or that first indication of what that looks like until April 1st.
Absolutely. You know, our last quarter, our last quarter of the year is still a huge quarter for us, especially with our, like, our occupational license tax. And Rodney and I have already been discussing revenue projections and, you know, how we feel like we're going to end the year and that type of thing. So as, so therefore, we're paying attention. So we, as we get another month of revenue under our belt, we're meeting to see if there's any potential changes, and we'll be able to project it more moving forward. But, you know, historically, we have projected our revenue within 95 to 101% of our budget. So, I mean, we have our revenue projections down very sound.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, John. Thank you, Jolene. We also have several informational items for the board to view this evening, including the school activity fund report, the annual wellness report, the biannual construction report, the personnel changes for January, and the position control document. If there are no questions about any of those items, that will conclude the board agenda for this evening, and we do not have a need to go into closed session.
Excellent. All right, so... All right. So a motion is in order to make the agenda dated January twenty-seven, twenty twenty, on which the action has been taken at this meeting, part of the minutes, copied in the minutes verbatim.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Morris, second by Board Member Love. All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Love.
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.